I will. And the camera was... or Fisher, was it Fisher? Fisher.
That's all.
They're dead.
All right. Ready for the pledge.
Yep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's pledge. Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this glorious weekend as we celebrate Labor Day in our country and in our community. We ask that you be with those that are in need of your mercy and grace tonight. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
All right. First thing on the agenda. First thing on the agenda is the agenda. Is there any corrections or anything you guys want to add to this?
We can't do that for a special meeting.
Oh, we can't? Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, all right.
It is.
Thanks for... Yeah, okay. So, first thing up is pursuant to KSA 7543-19. Huh?
Do you have to approve the agenda still, though? No. I know. It's just the agenda.
No. We can do that.
Do you... Is your mic on?
Yes, it's on.
Okay. And we can't change it.
We can't change it. So, it's approved by default. Okay. So, let's... pursuant to KSA 7543-19B1 to discuss personnel matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy. Who called this?
I did. And because of the time, let's go ahead and do the three commissioners. And Carolyn, how long would we need, Carolyn?
Pardon?
How long will we need?
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes.
Okay. Fifteen minutes. Three commissioners and Mrs. Singh. And we'll return at, let's call it, four eighteen.
Second.
Beerbauer?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
So, seventeen?
James, what for you?
Well, we need to order this for sure. Sure.
One more second. Um, fifteen, fourteen. Correct.
Okay.
Because I mean, like, if it was a holiday, we could reschedule Monday's meeting on to Tuesday, or any other day of the week. So I don't know why this couldn't replace Monday's meeting. But too late now. There's something we know in the future. Okay, so the Freeman agreement is Freeman got approval with the state. And now they need an extension to be able to get more state approval on Medicaid and federal approval on Medicare. So they can start moving forward. So they should open as soon as those two things come. Because they changed, they changed both of those. How that, how billing works on those two funds, Medicare and Medicaid. So they're working with the state and the federal government on both of those to get, to get. I mean, building's ready. I think they're pretty well staffed, so.
Are they open for business?
No, can't until they get this billing problem figured out.
So how long are they asking for the extension?
I believe the agreement says till December, because they had to do it at six months at a time. Or three months at a time. Ninety days, I think, is what it is. Yeah, ninety days.
Is there any hope of them?
If they get that stuff sooner, they can open soon.
Yes, this has to go to the city also after it goes through.
Right.
So this is the second amendment to their emergency department funding agreement.
Because actually, the first amendment we did would be expiring September the third. And this takes it from September third to December third.
So for the-
Jennifer? I sent it again, this thing they're trying to do.
To the-
Oh, my gosh, I'm sorry, yes.
So just for clarity, for the people out in YouTube world, Freeman's asking for an extension because they need, they need to clarify some bill-
Freeman.
Freeman, who did I say?
Freeman. FEMA.
Freeman is asking for an extension till December of 2025. So they get the billing-
Yes.
-stuff down. That, they need approval from the state and the city?
Well, I mean, the, the state handles Medicaid-
Okay.
And the federal government handles Medicare. And both procedures have changed on how they bill and the waivers. Or we put in for a waiver, because there's a time, a time period on how this, when you apply, before you can get, get your, the okay to bill for this stuff.
Okay, meanwhile, they're still gonna be getting the tax payment that we-
Yes.
-been giving them. Okay.
That's per the agreement.
Alright.
Yep.
And this is nothing-
I mean, they're still, they're still, you know, training, still doing stuff that, that's all within that, that, that.
And this is something that's not within their span of control?
No.
Okay.
No.
Yeah, I'm asking these questions because I'm anticipating people calling me.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, I think it was in the paper, too. They talked about the whole, the whole situation. And they did a tour. I think those that got, got to go to that were very pleased.
This amendment's not for an extension, it's for quarterly written itemized accountings. So this is just-
Okay, there was, should've been another one, too.
Oh, let me go look for another one then.
Who do they send it to?
They sent it to all three of us. And I thought they sent it to the clerk, too, but.
Sorry, I'm sorry about that.
I didn't-
That's all I got.
I forgot the slides.
Wasn't able to print it at home.
Yeah, I remember seeing that from.
Find it.
Well, I found a letter. Talking about this afternoon. Received an email from KDHE. On stage for form licensing.
Yeah, that's it.
Survey on September third?
Yeah.
Okay.
When was that sent?
August twenty-second.
Well, that's way back here. Seven days ago, a week from today.
Please confirm your agreement with this modified timeline, which is in accordance with the extension period-
Mm-hmm.
-allowed in our funding agreement for good cause shown.
Yeah.
I don't see anything to sign, it's just a letter.
I don't even see a letter.
Here.
I'm looking at the emails, what I'm getting at. And I don't see, there's not an attachment for me.
Well, no, it's just in the body of the email.
It's in the body, yeah, okay, alright.
I'm gonna message the lawyer, tell him we're taking another extra note here.
Hope we can't finish it, we'll do it.
So they're basically just asking for one to two weeks, round up to a month?
It all depends on, you know, because that's what those letters that we wrote, you know, asking, asking for a waiver.
Do we want to organize on this and talk about it on the night?
Yeah.
Okay. This executive session, then, I would like to add the two lawyers and Dr. Cohen.
On the next one?
And let's start it at, we can go back in, I, I believe. I don't want to overshoot too much and just be sitting in there. Let's just do thirty minutes to start with.
You're talking about on item five?
Yeah. Okay, so we're gonna table to the ninth on Freeman. Okay, and if I find that, and it only needs my signature.
I'm good.
Good with that? Good with that? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I move pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B one to discuss personnel matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy, to include the three commissioners, our two councils, lawyers, Rob, Bob Johnson, Jacob, not sure how to pronounce his last name. And our HR department, Steve, Dr. Cohen. This will be for thirty minutes.
We'll just do until five.
We'll do it till five o'clock and return to these quarters.
A second. Tran?
Yes.
Your bar?
Yes.
No burn?
Yes.
Amber?
Mm-hmm.
This Freeman thing. Clarifying, it was because of a billing-
The, for what I-
The requirements of billing have changed, somebody said that.
He believes for Medicaid with the state and Medicare with federal, I think, is what he was saying. Probably because the processes have changed and so.
What I understood was that the state had been in and approved, and takes care of Medicare.
Okay.
And so Medicaid.
Right.
But the federal government, then they won't come in. They won't guarantee that they'll be here until thirty days after the state has been here.
Ah, okay.
And they have to expect it for them to be able to treat somebody like me-
Yeah.
-that went out there, okay?
Gotcha.
Okay. I mean, they could treat me, but they couldn't bill Medicaid for my expenses.
Oh, that's, that's the thing.
They can't, they can't, they can treat you, they can treat any one of us right now, today.
Right.
Okay, but they couldn't build a state on Medicaid if you had a Medicare, till after they got the state approval. And they can't bill Medicaid, whatever, until they, until after they get that file off them.
Okay.
And they, they just take their own sweet time.
Yeah.
And that's why they're being contacted with our senators and our representatives from this area back in Washington DC, if, if they can get a new program out.
Yeah.
And I understand that if you had that, not for the hospital services, but we've had that for things, when I was still working at the college.
Gotcha.
You had approved.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And you couldn't buy this, this piece of equipment until after this day.
Right.
Is it-
Gotcha, okay.
And the thing about it is, they're very strict about that, too.
Right.
Very strict.
If you were an imminent life threatening-
They'd take care of you.
You went out there.
They'd take care of you.
They have to take care of you.
Oh, yeah, they would, they would want to take care of you. But if you've got Medicare, the government's not gonna pay for it.
So then they would have the right to bill you?
You have to bill, can't deny them. Only until they get its approval after the installation.
Yeah, because, I mean, so, so they bill the- And then you hold on to that, and then they get the approval, can they resubmit?
No, you have to claim yourself.
Okay, I would have to, okay, but I could make a claim if I wanted to do that.
Right, but they're not gonna pay it, because according to law, they have to have a certification throughout Medicare on the date that you were treated by.
And in the meantime, they're going to expect their money.
Sure. Well, I don't think, I mean-
No, no, I-
Especially in this community, where there's a lot of us there on.
That's what I was thinking, they wouldn't-
Yeah, and so, but, but they're, they're gonna take their sweet time. Now hopefully our senators and our representatives, it's healthy. I don't know, do they listen to them anymore or not? I used to be, well, I used to be successful at that when I was at the school. If it was something we wanted to know, and we weren't getting any, we'd reply to call Senator Dole's office.
Uh-huh.
Or, I can't think of any senator right now. But anyway, either one of their offices would say, hey, did you see what's happening? Usually within forty-eight hours, they'd call us back and say, let's hear, let's hear, whatever. You don't want to pay.
Yeah, yeah.
And so I'm sure that, based on what Greg said, because he's on, mom base on that Freeman, that free study. And Greg, Greg said they had already contacted, and the representative for our area.
I never, I never get much success within them local or even states. They were not gonna open that, that special cemetery on Sunday for our ceremony.
These were just my copies.
So I started with the local politician, and I called, uh, two others, the desperate Miranda, or, I called him. I ain't yet any day. At that time, I think, I probably from one.
Two-sided.
I called his office, and I didn't get anything, but I called his vice, inviting him, you know? Monday, I read in Dennis Michael, he said, you can call the doctor, it's gonna be open Sunday. The next Sunday. So somebody, I hit the, it all was, was a bureaucrat.
Well, sure, and, and they-
It wasn't the politician, it was a bureaucrat.
So if they asked, well, that's what's, that's what I was, that's what I was. I'm sure, I mean, I watched, I was in the bureaucracy, that's why I was in favor of getting rid of the bureaucracy, because they did a lot more than good.
Yeah.
Since she doesn't want you to like, push the subject.
They have never been dropped out.
We actually, we had one grant that was for, uh, they think this has been years ago. It was for international students. And we applied for, and these were Central Americans, and we applied for the grant.
They're international.
That beautiful grant. And you have two students from every Central American faculty. And they came in here, and they were wonderful kids. And you know, they wanted, they were all going back home, but they were here to learn. And they were only there two years, I think about four years, because it's a program out there. Okay, we had more trouble than this grant, had nothing to do with the kids or the school. These bureaucrats thought we should be paying thirty dollars a day, and decided for them, when they were done. Back then, we could take different dollars, for six dollars. We could take them out to New Berlin somewhere for twelve dollars. You don't understand?
Yeah.
It was difficult, so we requested a adjustment, and can we take the money that we're not using, and we entertain it, and use it like an educational supplies, take home with them, whatever. You gotta use it. I mean, and it was just so ridiculous, but that was my, and this was forty years ago. But this is my first experience with those people.
People wonder why the week we went out here. I had to get it to my wife, I had to request. Hey, I was getting a sponsor, I knew her teacher, and I was like, by the way, this is not getting any, it's new. And I am, I'm asking to explain that. You know, because they haven't helped me.
Couldn't give me specific ones.
For med, I, I, it wasn't Medicare that was that, it was tractors. Right then, I'm, I'm, well, I'm met with people, and I asked them questions.
Trying to make sure they look alike in the same water.
Why is this being approved? He said, he said, no, he has one piece of paper, and you look down there, and you get that paper coming. I remember that proof. If your stat is not taking a job, you're not gonna get paid.
Well, the thing about it is, they, part of it is, they have these rules, and they're not flexible. And this is quite one of the things that was police. I know, that's why I said that one, that one was kind of complicated though. One executive right, was what he did for veterans, I took it out, where he's got it down now. Because it's really good, it's, it's still received the benefits, et cetera. You know what I'm saying?
I, I said, please, I'm, I'm, because I have Medicare and tractors. I can go to any doctor I do.
That's what I'm saying, right, right, and that's great.
And I don't have to.
But there's some people that aren't as fortunate as you are.
Well, there's some people that, well, I, I've done this, I've given, I've on my own done, I've taken them. The VA.
Yes.
They get the care.
Sure, well, we, we had several families here in Fort Scott. We had several families that espoused workforce at the college. They were retired veterans, and they had the VA benefits. And so they, she didn't take her hospitalization, she didn't need to, because she fell under his care with the veterans. And she, they, they ordered all their pharmaceuticals through Pina.
My wife does.
Yeah.
She falls under proper with me, you need to go there. And the, the bad thing about it is, the people don't get this. Doctors don't fall out of the tree, nurses don't fall out of the tree. President Trump has cut the VA massively, and guess what? You're not gonna rebuild that overnight.
Yeah.
He learned that only in aircraft control.
Yeah.
He, he cut the snipe out of them, and all of a sudden, he didn't have enough, and he was giving them fifty thousand dollars.
At least they're gonna have capable people now. I mean, hopefully, hopefully. Hopefully, at least they're gonna have capable training people now. But the VA is much better than it was ten years ago. Now, when my daddy was a medical trainer, and he, we always took him to a hospital, he had had kidney surgeries and different things. And they were excellent. And during, during towards, in his life, when he had a heart attack, and Dr. McKenna was taking care of him, so he stayed in the Kansas City. The VA hospital in Kansas City was terrible, terrible. But they say it's not much improved since then.
And my brother was in medical school, he was a doctor. And he worked the VA.
So am I, though.
And you know what he said? He goes, I wouldn't work at the VA, you know why? They don't pay anything.
They don't pay.
Well, my brother is only a few years younger than me. Oh, he's a millionaire now.
Yeah.
Why would, why would I work for the VA?
Yeah.
We're treated like a piece of crap.
They don't, they don't have very good, my, one of my daughters is a doctor, and she, that's how she made her money. Went through medical school, was working at the VA hospital in Kansas City. And she said that they just don't have the same quality of supplies, and the same quality of health, et cetera, as they do in the other hospitals.
You would think it, and if you sold, you would get great care. I broke my ankle three places. The doctor, originally, they, they farmed me out, I mean, local medical, took care of me, they put me in a cast gear here. Later on down the road, they hired a contract doctor on post contract. I could see when I went to see him, he cut this off, he didn't like spirit, he's an alcoholic, and that's what I wanted. And then, when I got all done, and I was able to walk, this captain, he was a doctor, and I, and he goes, what we're gonna do? And I said, no, that's not what you're gonna do, sir, you're not qualified to work PD here. I tried to do CLC, and I'm glad I did, because what he was gonna do is fry my foot from the inside out. When I got finished with the orthopedic surgery, he pulled a couple of pins and stuff out. And I understand, when I was finished, when I recovered, the rehab on, is military stuff. But I rehabbed myself in Olympic gym stuff, I, I ran thirteen miles, three times a week on the flight. And so it, it did get fixed. But the bad thing is, I went back to that captain, and I said, how many private, one-two basic training, or, or the job training, that you, because you think you're an orthopedic surgeon, have? And he was like, I'm sorry, I, he was all ghost white, and I said, no, I'm, I'm trying to drive a point home. But it's not your expertise, you need to send it out.
Well, definitely, and they do, I think, today, probably.
I can tell you, I got out two thousand, and I'm always beautiful. Now, my, my, when I grew up, the family doctor was at Tijuana, and that was a colony. I went on here, they took me up there, and it wasn't the same day, the next day, and Tommy looked at me, x-rayed, he said, yeah, it's great. Now, this is in his office in college. He, he said that arm, put it in a cast. And corporate time, come lock, and you go back, get the cast off. You know what it cost? Back then?
Fifty bucks.
That's it?
Bless your heart.
I know, it just, it didn't come out.
But Tommy Oswald was eye, ears, nose, throat.
Well, sure.
Surgery, if you wanted glasses, you'd come in on Saturday morning, because that's how much I could deal.
Well, that's, I mean, that's probably through the most of the doctors back then, if they were men.
Yeah. He owned out of Allen County Hospital. And Tommy, he delivered, he did it all. I can say this, I top dust the money working out there at the fountain. And I was in town here, so I went to see Doctor Bash, and he wasn't my doctor. Doctor Bash shot me up with a double shot of penicillin in each button. And about, I went back to work after two weeks, and about a month, month and a half later, I come back, count the dust money in. They had diagnosed that. And I was miserable, and I told my, I got taken to Tommy, and he took me up there, and he looked at me and said, you take these pills, if you're not dead, come back tomorrow, come back tomorrow. And he sent me out to hospital, and I x-rayed bones, and he said, you gotta dust them. And he goes, he would find another line of work, and I told him, I told him, you know. And he didn't take, I mean, made a record and stuff, he didn't fill out a file. He comes in, and he'd say, you're one of the black on the way. I go, I'm the one that broke the arm, go, you're claiming. So my sister's son, Freddie, he was turning blue. He, he, he was tired, or he's turning blue, and he'd feed me papers, and he'd flip and stuff, and that stuff.
Yes, sir.
He took it, there, Tommy, and Tommy looked at him, he was like, man, he's got nails, and he'll outgrow it, but he'll lead gate make sure, he's gonna leave, I wanna make sure. He said, I'll thank you for the fact that you didn't want to get a decision, guy from back in the door. Yep, he got some oil.
Right now, Freddie, he's like, he's like forty, fifty, he's boss.
But Tommy, see, that, that's the deal.
Cemetery is town shows.
Jennifer, how far down on the agenda is the budget? How much further from the last one?
It's the very last thing.
It's the last thing.
Have they, how many more executive sessions do they have before they get the budget?
There's no more. Should be the last one, but Micah said something about what they could go.
Yeah.
That's the one, too.
I can't change this question.
No, they already said that.
Oh.
Yeah, okay.
Do you want other questions?
I've been coming, even if you-
If they want more time, you want- For the exacting, and justification, I believe, so.
In what you call, uh, the biggest economy.
Thirty minutes, and that's, that doesn't vote, we don't get that, and that's not on.
Yeah, um, I have an agenda, if you wanna do that. I am not, the city doesn't, well, they used to, uh, uh, I, I can say this.
Oh, Kansas, Cameron here. They put her in as mine.
You're good.
She, she, that was one of the first, first ones she made, where not, you can bring one of your own to a commissioner's conference, or not, don't worry.
Well, and you're not supposed to, so, you just, you're not supposed to take any type of action, it's all these chips. Like they talked about, they didn't call me, so they want you, they're kept any action taken, it's all these chips.
I, I agree, yeah. From Carol Dean Cohen, I can't remember, oh, I, I didn't want, you know, Carol Dean, they had a couple of committees that looked at that, when they lived there. Oh, gosh, no, I had an issue.
I, I was, I was raising too many kids that I might have never had.
I had an issue, and that's when they, they would be, Monday, they had a meeting, Monday, it was nine to three. They'd go to the twiddle, and they had another one on Friday, nine to three. And so I come in, and mine was a issue about a flight away, and ride back from property, and they had me. And I thought, it's been there forever, there would be a rain, I thought, oh, it's, it's probably in there. And, you know, I don't even know, the meeting got started, they actually took me to the commission, you know, they took me up to the flight lift. And he looked down there, and he said, nope, there's not one. But he showed me right up front, and I went, oh, okay. And I was like, that's a service, just right there. I got my answer right then. And sadly, that was, I wrote mine back to forty-eight. He had lessons, right, and named Kevin, inherited forty-eight, so he might kind of join the corner. But he was in, 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 you know?
Dot com?
And he would have to see somebody, you'd get it, you know? He decided to stay at one, you know, in that direction, he was so, and my brother was some good friends.
I know, I am.
And, and, and so, and you go on the land, with the road running back through there. About eight weeks. It was sold through guys, and he said, if you can use it, so you can make assignments, and you can, and they're not.
I wanna go to, like, search on new, math, six-three, math, to, to, somebody to use, and what you were working on. You know, goes, I look back there, and it was probably all.
And they don't like hell, they don't want it.
Using your keywords, it's a tutorial.
And I'm, I'm, I ain't seen them here, often, again, I haven't seen them, and when they left, over the years, and they're, and get ready to get. Well, it looked like for me, I could just get up and, and probably do some craft, or something that's good, like. Right here, my, my, it's, it's two-sided. But we seem to just got here, maybe. There's much money, but, but, that's probably you, you're gonna. And which one of the directors are you married to?
Roy.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, they're all, they're all.
They were, they're best.
Roy's dad was Charles.
Yeah.
Barbara.
They were my co-op customers. I worked for co-op for the first twenty years. And out of Fort Scott, but I went to Union Town, so that one day we, Union Town, because Alice Randy was our secretary out there. And, uh, and that's how I met Mr. Cole. He's such a nice man, and then a lot of people, you know, but we had quite a few, those people also came in, Fort Scott, to the co-op, and they, things that we hadn't, they didn't have in Union Town. But all those dares.
Yep. I think it was about to be smaller, so.
Max, I'm trying to take some of the kids.
Yeah, Max, and.
David.
And David's still out there, you know, Max passed away.
Yes, I remember being that.
And Jan, Sister Jan is passed away, and Kathy and Gary, Kathy, he worked, Gary worked for, uh, Western.
Yes.
Insurance, and ended up moving to McKinney, and then their kids ended up in, um.
Really?
Old pastor churches, and, so they lived down there.
And McKinney, Texas, has a beautiful Western, had, you know, Western, oh, gorgeous, and it was right off the highway, you'd see the big sign. It was when my kids, I used to live Fort Worth a lot, and, uh, now I don't, I just bypass Fort Worth, but, yeah, that's how I went through Fort Worth.
Yeah.
And to get to Christina's house, I always saw that big Western Insurance building.
And then David's son, um.
Yeah, and he, we're.
He's, he's, he's still farming, but.
Martha worked for me at the college, she's wonderful, hard worker, super hard to work for.
And all of his kids are, you know, one's the closest, I think, is in which, Chris, is in which, uh, Janet is in, I'm not sure how. Draw, I don't know, that was first time. And Aaron, I think, is in Chicago, or in there, or in Chicago. So, yeah, we usually get asked, certain age of, of, around, about Chris and Aaron and Janet, but those were the kids that they ran with. And all those are cousins' kids, so, my kids and those kids are second cousins, third cousins, I don't know.
As you say that, this is a funny story, but Patricia's Luke. My, one of my grandsons lives in Texas, and when he was married, they were, they were like their fifth, and they were just yesterday, they just had their eighty-fourth. So Luke was asking me, and Wes was saying, Luke was asking me about Western, and he said, "Well, hey, now that makes Ryan one of this, Tyra's brother, or Luke, or Bruce, come." He said, "Now, let me try and hunt Luke up," and I said, "Yeah." He says, "What does that make me?" I said, "Well, he'd be your second cousin, if you and Tyler are first cousins." So explain that, remember, how do you become a second cousin and a third cousin? So we talked, we talked about that.
Yeah.
And it is confusing, so, you know, they never thought about it before.
Yeah, um, gosh. Jan's daughter, Jennifer Heimer.
Yeah.
Her daughter, Riley, and then we have two granddaughters, they were, now, Riley is just now seen, but my other two granddaughters were, seemed left. And so it was kind of a, a thing to go to the, just go, hey, you know, she's a cousin, and they just look out, but it's like, yes, they're the fourth down, you know?
Yeah, Jan, the dares also looked alike.
They kind of did, they all had dark features, dark hair, dark eyes, yes, they did. They got golden hair.
It's not like the Georges, those are not the Georges.
Yes, yes.
And, uh.
Yeah, I would take my kids to Union Town, when they were still going home, I would take my kids to Union Town, back home, so that first floor, I don't know. And they, the people would look at me, they didn't know who I was, but they knew, they knew all my kids were theirs.
But, you know, some families' genes are extremely strong like that, and their, Alice's kids, those will apply. I, I can say this, too, I don't have my height, but my height is, I don't know, he's six-four. But Derek, my grandfather, was, was six-four, too, and Dad was six-one. I don't know what my height is, I'm just like, I'm five-six.
Max's, Max's son, always that, like, he kind of did that, he, he was tall, always tall, and I had on the power side, but then Brett joined, and it couldn't match him. And he, he was too much.
Although, I don't know.
I love it, really tough.
People don't know this, I, I put in a guide, and he was very careful, he had some permanent education. And it said, right, and, you know, he said, he's still tall. Well, I told him, I said, "And Amy, her, they're only down here, just off, and he was, no, no." So I set him down, and he, and he went to hell, and, and they called Ford Rocker, and they made, made an exception, it said, it's no exceptions in the book. And they made an exception, they send him out to, I didn't ask for guardian, and outside of the building, and they measured his weight. I did the whole half.
You're just looking.
I was like, "How lucky can you be?"
And I was like.
I, I totally, like, I was, I was, I was, yeah, there's a square, yeah, there's a square option, that's what I was looking at, like, paper between. And yes, they, uh, many, they have quite a few, uh, lenses. I never cared long you were qualified to, uh.
Did the rest of my stuff ever print? Has it ever just done that, just ignored a print? But it's not on the back of it, it's not on any of my other stuff?
Whoo, doggy. Why are all the drafts keep coming back to me?
I don't know, but I thought we were gonna, tonight, finalize it, and then, but this is a lot of paper for knowing it was gonna change.
So, those are four options.
Well, one, we've, we've already seen the one. We've already seen, oh, my, I see.
Now, thank you, yeah.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, thank you, Amber and Jennifer.
I didn't know you had an option.
I thought you were putting this budget book here, and I was like, oh, man.
Woo, woo, woo.
All right, we're, well, we got a couple of minutes.
Two minutes.
I guess I could start signing.
Here's the accounts payable, but you'll need to sign.
If you punch holes in your stuff, turn off your mic.
And I, and I need you to hold that check, please, if you can, yes. Where's it at? It will be in that stack, on, if you rub it out, I'll make a note to put it out. Okay. And then a, uh, an attorney assistant's gonna come pick it up from you personally. Okay, so it's, it's still good to stay. You just hold it, yes, you hold it in your office. For, use the assistant. Mm-hmm.
I wish I would've known you were gonna do this, I was gonna ask you for another line, another line on this.
Well, 'cause I saw it, they went through, all of them.
On all of them, 'cause the bottom line for me was, the bottom line for me on all this was, whenever we look at all the plans in totality, the very bottom line is how much is in cath reserves?
So you wanna cash your bills in, all right. Which, Susan asked me, that's whatever changes you guys wanna make, to let her know when she's going to change the actual workbook and email to the jury. So, that's kind of the, you're gonna be.
Okay. Okay, it's five o'clock, David.
Okay, I move that we return to session, no action.
Second.
You burn?
Yes.
You burn?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, next up is technology discussion.
I spent an hour on the phone yesterday with your, uh, Corey, that you recommended go through some things with us.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And Avion, and Jason, and then I resent with some changes, the, uh, the project version five, um, Bob, and, and we made some changes, and, and I would move that we go forward with that. Stronghold, project version five.
Okay.
Corey said we were getting a pretty good deal, by the way, thought they were undercutting themselves.
Okay, so we're looking at the, the S O W's from stronghold, right?
Yeah, uh, you wanna look at version five, and then the other one I'll talk about separately.
Need a bigger desk. Okay, so what's changed?
What has changed is, I'm gonna just see what Bob and I talked about. Bob says we need to change to the state of Kansas law will control rather than Missouri, and either party may terminate, um, with, uh, notice in writing, which that would go towards managed services rather than separation.
Where's that in this S O W, or page, sorry, I don't mean to be, going across like that, I'm just.
We'll ask Bob. He was. It's probably in the terms back here. Oh, um, section number two is where, where you'll find the first one. Do you see it in service period?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay, and they did put that in there.
Okay. Did they give us a cost breakdown for that service period, or is this it right here? On page?
Yeah, it's on the first page, yeah, so the project is totally separate from the services, and it's not on the first page, it's actually on the last, because there, we've been discounted.
Because the, the last page says services, and then the front page says.
It's reoccurring subtotal that you wanna look at on, which one are you looking at, we should probably look at the same one, oh, moved on.
You told me five.
I'm sorry, I, I thought we were looking.
I followed directions very well.
We're over here to manage services now.
Yes, so, yeah, it's on the subtotal, they, they discounted it, and, and as I said, um, Mr. Breyer, he thought that they're discounting themselves right out, but.
So, okay, I'm on, I'm on, um, version two, page three, that dollar amount is correct?
Uh, let me look, what?
Under managed IT services, V C I O consulting services.
No, that one, we have to go to the back, uh, you're going to page five, oh.
Six.
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 Yep, page six, and that's been, um, dis- discounted, the recurring subtotal, and.
Okay, that's the dollar amount.
Yep, monthly, and that is managed services, like, they're gonna manage all our partners and everything, just like a, just like a boots on the ground.
Okay, wait, wait.
So, don't worry about.
When you say boots on the ground, that tells me there's a body in the building.
Just like.
Just like, okay.
Boots on the.
That's pretty good.
Yep.
So that, um.
So then on page eight, that's the, the monthly service.
And then, once we get it, um.
Page six.
And then there's, it shows up again on eight.
Yes.
Okay.
And this is, this dollar amount is not, it does not include any projects moving forward, other than, once we pay for this project, version five.
Right, they don't, they don't, they don't suspect we'll need anything, once they get it cleaned up, everything will be part of maintenance. It's just a project, because there's so much to do.
Right, okay, hey, Chair?
I hear a little whispers moving back, uh, behind me, asking what the cost is.
What's the what?
The cost.
Oh, that's a trade secret.
No, the project cost, um, let me go over it first.
Kind of briefly go over the project.
What, what project?
IT. Okay, can you hear now?
I'm sorry, we need a, we need a.
We need microphone, speakers.
He's got the loudest voice. Then, there we go. I didn't do it, Commissioner Milburn, that was Commissioner Barry Bauer.
What is?
I said, who has the loudest voice?
Oh, did they point at me?
No, she wanted me to talk about it.
So, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna make sure our systems are independent, um, they're gonna work on security, um, they are gonna organize all wiring pathways, equipment mapped, cleaned up, documented, um, so that we always know we have reliability. Sheriff's Office have dedicated networks, backup internet connections, ensure they never go offline, future ready. County all have a clear, modern setup that can be supported at any vendor with it. Guessing or confusion included in the work, gonna strengthen the gatekeeper, the firewall, um, it's not doing everything that it can, and so they're going to put strict rules, only approve activity allowed, monitoring, so we can see who comes in and out, place protections, automatically block threats, organizing the roads and highways, the network and wifi, I don't know anything that I'm talking about. Org, the computers, phones, cameras, the road system, what they call it, the cable, cables, wires, and signals are jumbled. They're gonna create separate lanes, V LANs is what they call them, different groups, like sheriff's office, courthouse staff, phones, set up wifi for each group. Sheriff's Office has its own, every department has its own, standardized all network equipment, so it's consistent across buildings. Replacing old equipment, they're gonna remove outdated devices the county no longer needs, um, replace with modern standard equipment, move certain computers to new locations. Now, I will say, if we need hardware, like, there's Windows ten, and the hardware won't take an upgrade, and we need Windows eleven, we'll have to pay for that, but they're gonna install and do all that in this project, just get everything right where it should be, because I'm almost certain everybody's getting kicked off of Windows limit, of ten.
So what happened to all the old equipment that was, well, not old, all the equipment that was left here when the IT personnel?
It's over there in that room, they're supposed to help.
Still there.
Yeah, and they're gonna clean that room out for us, so that, I mean, we're, we're working with the driver's license, they wanna come over, I'm pretty sure, but it has to go through a lot of steps. So, they're gonna help me move things out of that room into the com- computer room, there's another computer room there.
Okay, so I guess what, what I'm asking now is, until we deplete our reserve of equipment, we'll use that equipment, correct?
If it's any good and not outdated, and can take the eleven, I would imagine they would. If it's any good and not outdated and can take the 11, I would imagine they would inventory it and use it.
I just want to make sure that we're using everything.
Yeah, I did see the new computers in there also. I don't know what they are.
Okay, Mr. Smith had a question.
Did you want me to finish reading this?
I didn't hear anything about backup servers.
I'm not done reading.
We have...
She's still going.
Okay, so cleaning up user accounts. County has old accounts for people who no longer work here and some security rules are out of date. There's likely some keys floating around. They're gonna turn off accounts, should no longer be active, require stronger logins. Review and cleanup who has high level administrator access. Reduce the risk of unauthorized access. Create clear traffic lanes, phone lanes, so they always sound clear, camera lanes, door access, sheriff, courthouse. That Cory really understood what he was reading here. I'd like him to do this. This would be better. Trace every fiber line, remove unused abandoned cabling. Sheriff's separations, sheriff's office will be, they specifically asked for independence from the courthouse in broader county system. Stronghold will give the sheriff's office its own dedicated lane and wifi network, remove old equipment, replace it with the same monitored gear used across the county. Keep sheriff traffic completely separate unless connections are explicitly needed. This ensures that law enforcement systems stay private, secure and high performing. Phone system review, they're gonna, once the bigger projects complete, stronghold also review sheriff's office phone system with the T E C to confirm it's set up according to best policies configured for long-term deliverables. Updated firewall rules, diagrams, security reports. Wireless network maps, fiber maps, reports of cleanup scheduled for ongoing software and scheduling for updates. Updated diagrams, why it matters. It's not just about technology, it's about safety, independence and accountability. I, I didn't read it word for word. I just touched on words there.
The server's already, the backup server's already there and we're also linked to their cloud if I remember correctly.
You would now split county backup server.
We're not splitting anything. We're creating, no, we're creating a totally different lane for the sheriff. He's still connected to the server. He's still connected to the firewall. If we give the sheriff a new firewall, then we have to give a new domain identifier. And when we give him a new domain identifier, we have to give him a backup server for that. So in this, in essence, what you're doing is you're saying Bourbon County has two separate, totally, totally different network systems. So the cost of the taxpayer is double. Makes sense? Because now we have to, we have to maintain two systems separately and on the second system, we have to buy that system. Makes sense? And right now with everything that's happening in the county, we were, when we talked to Jason the last time he was here, he assured us that we could give the sheriff exactly what the sheriff is requiring without having a new server. Makes sense? So in the end, it came down to like, okay, what's cost prudent for, for the people at this point? And that's where Commissioner Milburn brought this to the table. Sheriff would like to speak, sir.
Oh, go ahead.
So is this a temporary thing or is this a decision that's been made that you're now moving forward with stronghold?
So we have an interim agreement with stronghold right now and this is a project that we've talked about since, since we first brought them on to get us cleaned up. And then they're willing until we make a decision to do anything to continue to carry us with more managed services. And like Bob said, it's a month. Anybody can terminate at any time, so.
I just wondered on record that I do not, I do not approve stronghold for IT services for sheriff's office at present time. And so if you guys are moving forward with that, that's fine. Actually, I want to ask that question if this is a temporary thing taking place so that can be reviewed. I would prefer to have another IT company actually overlook the sheriff's office.
You have one in mind?
It's the same one that's been here in the county, D-Port. It's the same ones that we have used in the sheriff's office.
Advantage computer.
And I think that with our needs and the cost, I think it might be a little bit more reasonable for what we're doing. But I don't want to go too far into weeds until I actually get the paperwork and information needed.
Okay.
Come before the commission.
Right.
I just wanted on record that I don't agree with the decision. For the commissioners making the decision for my office as to what piece of equipment is going to be used. To me, I think you might be opening the door to say, hey sheriff, we don't like your uniforms. We want you to wear something else.
I don't think we're opening the door, right?
By the way, by the way.
I don't think we're opening the door because we're not changing anything that, that isn't standard practice right now. I mean...
When, when, when we move, when we move forward, you know, to go with something that's gonna be more permanent, you're not the only elected official that wants to be at the table to discuss this and then everybody should be at the table. Because it's, we all have a stake in it.
And there's a lot of stuff being, you know, talked about here where elected officials should be involved.
Right.
And people need to be involved, but right now at the present time, like I said, I don't agree with it, but it, we'll move on and see what happens.
Yeah.
I think, I think what we're trying to say to you is we're not trying to tell you what equipment and how and when to use it. What we're saying is we have a system that we're unaware of. It's health in totality. The health of the system, the health of the network in totality. We're not aware, we, when we, when we got the report, the health report, there was a lot of things in there. We're like, okay, we need to definitely fix that. So what we're, what we're trying to do right now is fix it. And then once it's fixed, then by all means, please make your assessment. If you're still unhappy with it, come to the table, we'll talk about it. But for right now, it's just like, let's fix the system and once we get the, the network fixed and everything's secure, then we can say, okay, look, where do we go from here? Do we leave it alone or does the sheriff require additional security protocols for his, his sector? Makes sense?
So you say, well, yes and no, because you're still kind of going down that same road to saying vendor with stronghold when you make that comment. But I said, no disrespect to the commission right now making this decision. But I just wanted on record that I do not agree with what's taking place and everything, mentioning the sheriff's office and what they're doing. But I'll just sit back and wait.
Well, right now you're sharing. I mean, it's, it's, it's an upgrade honestly for you, what they're, what they're proposing to do.
Like I said, I'll wait and sorry for, you know...
It's what?
That's not what he's talking about, Mike. He's saying that if you, if you, if you decide to hire these people permanently, he has input on someone he would much rather have for the security person as far as the sheriff's concerned. Is that not correct, Bill?
Yes, I have a clear view of that.
I got that. I mean, I, I think you're not the only, you know, there was other elected officials that spoke that they want input in this as well.
I guess I'm confused and let me just tell you why. Because if we hired somebody boots on the ground, would you just hire a different person anyway? Because they worked for the commission and they were doing things uniformly?
Do I? No, I don't understand that question.
Did you understand?
No, ma'am.
If we hired a person instead of contracting it out like we're talking about doing, if we were to hire a person, which we just got away from that. But if we were to do that, you wouldn't want to utilize that IT person, you want somebody completely separate.
That's where I was getting away from before the IT department got dissolved. That's where I was working towards who'd be separate from the courthouse. Like I said before, during many conversations at the table with the commission, I had made this comment before that a lot of sheriffs, majority of the sheriffs, if not all of them, are completely separate. We're in our own little island from the courthouse, from District Four, from everything. We're our own little island. If it's a separate person from a county employee, I don't feel comfortable with that, looking in or what's going on. I would rather have, you know, another outside source. I've already been down that road before in years past where county employee would go and search for things based on the instructions of county commissioner. And I'm not going down that road again. I'm not.
And I understand.
And so that's the reason why here at the beginning of the year, we were talking about being separate and that I would go my own way. But I will be back to visit and stuff when some, that's kind of the joke anyways, I'm gonna go away and kind of be on my own little island with my IT affairs and go from there, so.
Well, this, this will at least be an upgrade for you until you get there.
Anything's an upgrade.
Right, okay. And so they're trying to separate and get you, get you, get you your own line and your own everything, separate from us right for now for interim. Because we have to do the other work anyway, so why not let them bump you?
I just wanted to... Apparently there's an addition, sorry, apparently there's an additional question.
May I?
Yes.
It would seem to me, and it was difficult to hear back here. It would seem to me that when you first started talking about these plans and you're looking through them, that you were alluding to a number which I assume is how much this is going to cost.
A project cost, yes, seventeen thousand dollars.
My question is, have you already published or have you said what's this going to cost?
I just said it just now.
Well, are you asking about the project? Is this two parts?
Well, I, what I'm really saying is that I have not heard you say how much
Gotcha.
and this project is going to cost and this project is going to cost. I'm just curious.
There's only one project. There's only one project.
He just said there were two.
No, there's, there's managed services, which is what we have right now in the interim. And there's a project. There's two things. The project only happens one time.
Bottom line.
Yeah.
What's this going to cost?
I just said it, seventeen thousand.
No, you, yeah, I did.
Didn't you hear me, Amber?
That's the first time I've said that.
Okay, Amber heard it.
It's, well...
Well, there was, two conversations were going on at the same time. You were talking, she, she, yeah.
Yeah, it's seventeen thousand.
It's seventeen thousand.
But the thing, what I wanted to say was they're, they're gonna come in, they're gonna clean up everything. Because whether the sheriff gets his own IT guy or this stronghold doesn't, they're gonna have to come in and clean this up. They're gonna have to remove all the old cables. They're gonna have to remap it and that's all part of this project. So when it's all said and done, everything's gonna be nice and neat, okay? It's gonna be better. And then at that point, if the sheriff wants reassessed and say, you know, this is not working out for me, I welcome him to the table to have this conversation. That's, that's not what this is about. It's not about controlling his, his operation or anything. It's about us cleaning up the system we currently have to see if it actually is supposed to work the way it is. Because he's having issues with, with his world, so I get it. Yes, sir.
To clarify.
Sure.
I am sure the sheriff needs many things. All I want to know as a citizen of the county is how much this cleanup is going to cost.
Seventeen.
Seventeen thousand dollars.
Ms. Dare, Mrs. Dare.
Okay, you said there were two parts.
Yes.
Does each part have a cost?
Yes.
What are the names of those two parts and what do they cost?
Project, seventeen thousand. Managed services, which is what we have right now. Let me look at that.
Eighty-nine hundred.
Eighty-nine hundred.
Each month, right?
That's right, yep. Yes.
So it comes out to like a hundred and seven thousand a year.
Where we were paying our boots on the ground, a hundred and forty-nine thousand plus benefits and...
What do you mean by boots on the ground?
The person, if you had an FTE here, if you had an FTE here, it was gonna cost you that. And then she went back and did research. At one point, the budget for IT was three hundred some thousand dollars.
Yeah. Saves a lot of money.
Okay.
Sorry about the confusion.
Are we, what are we at on this? Are we, we good with?
Yeah, so I have consulted several IT experts that are within this community and they think that this is a very good value.
Okay, well, I mean, for the interim, that's, I like the project and I like where we're at on the cost, so.
I like the S O W. I think he was very detailed in it.
When they get done with the project, then we'll get with the department and like department heads and elected officials and do a work session and see where we want to go to the future.
So...
So do we want to do the project and then the managed services?
Until then.
After the project's done. Right now, we're on the interim till the project's done, then we'll do managed services until we get something else figured out.
Yep.
Okay.
You want to make a...
Yep, I move that we approve the separation of county project version five and the managed services project version two.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 Okay, next up, funds transfer.
Yeah, my turn.
Your turn.
Yep, so, um, you need to transfer five hundred and eighty thousand dollars to Roden Bridges.
From where?
From where?
From their tax.
Oh, okay. That has the money that you're wanting from the air.
So a five eighty, correct? Because that's what I got from Dustin today.
What do we got in the sales tax right now?
That I don't know.
They would...
Last I, I checked this morning, it was one million, ten thousand and change.
So the five eighty should carry him over to the end of the year.
And that's for asphalting or operations?
Operations, yes.
Yeah.
Um, but this is something I want to put in y'all's ears moving into future years is this thing, I'm not really... I've never been to a place where the, the director comes to, the director comes to leadership and says, mother me, I need money. It's always been like, okay, every quarter you get a draw. Here's your draw for the quarter. If you're gonna go over, you need to let us know. But if you don't, there's your draw. Makes sense? But I'm not sure how much taxes is going into this account on a quarterly basis to do that. I mean, I spoke to the interim director and he's, he understands where I'm coming from, so he's gonna work on a, on a cost, basically. A wag, you know what that is, right? He's gonna work on a wag and, and see if we can set up something where it is a draw every quarter. And I don't know how you guys feel about it.
Well, I think it's covered by, I mean, there, there's state statute that sets the guidelines on what the money can be used for, so you can't...
But it will only go into that account.
So if he's drawing off of it, he needs to account for that as well.
Right.
Yeah.
Just something, I'm not, nothing we have to vote on today for that part, but...
Okay.
So I make motion that, or is discussion done? I'm sorry. Do you have any questions?
No.
Anybody once, twice? So, okay.
Who, I have one last question. Who, who moves the money? The treasurer, right? Who takes the money out of the, that one account?
It's been the budget CFO.
County clerk has done it and the treasurer has done it.
Okay.
Robert, you would like to do that?
Well, seeing how the clerk is out of pocket, I, I move that we allow the county treasurer to move five hundred and eighty thousand dollars out of the tax account into...
The Roden Bridge sales tax?
Yes, sir.
A second.
Okay. Yes.
Yes, Dan.
Yes.
Tell me that number one more time, please, Commissioner.
Five hundred and eighty thousand clams.
Okay.
I thought you were just gonna pull robbery. Okay, next up, budget discussion. Publication date will be September third for budget hearing for September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
And that's the hard surface road tax, Amber, because there's two sales tax, so it'd be the hard surface road tax.
So it looks like the, now you polled your, your, your draft or did you resubmit now or?
No, I didn't. I did not do that.
Sixty-two point.
They, I did not. That was worst case scenario if we had to take nine and one from the city. I did not do that.
So let's just bury that right now.
Which ones are, Micah's?
Yeah. I thought that's what she said last time, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, so.
Wait, I have a draft that doesn't say Mike on it. Oh, that's mine. What's this one? Oh, that's mine.
Yeah, I'm gonna... Yeah, I'm gonna, I mean, I was looking at...
So we're tabling Micah's.
Right. We're not tabling it, we're canceling it.
It was, that was the worst case scenario.
If we, it was all based off of nine-one-one conditions.
Page thirty-one on your budget forms shows three years and it shows your mail legacy.
Okay.
Yeah. So we got...
Oh, sorry.
Three, yeah, they got them written out here on the mill levies.
Oh, Susan gave a proposal.
Yeah.
Yeah, what's the difference between Susan's and mine's?
I have no idea.
I looked through them very quickly while you were in executive session and it is...
Pretty close.
Yeah, there's subtle changes in them.
Would you want to come up here and go over them, Jennifer? Thank you.
Any of those drafts that you don't want, we can take them back to the backs for scrap paper.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, well, I leave mine here, so. Here, hand that over to that scrap.
This one's from another day.
Okay, which one we're hitting first? Which, which question are we gonna talk about first?
I don't, I say, well, yours has already been up there and BAC's already been up there. So let's start with Susan.
Okay.
She should be here for this, but I mean, she's on vacation. I did not know she was submitting one. Do you got a good feeling, I mean, about where you?
I don't really have... An opinion either way, it's...
Okay.
People aren't buying insurance.
Well, I had, I had, and it goes with all three of them. I did, you know, I was up late last night looking at the two that I had, which, you know, I had the draft, which now it looks different, that the board gave us or the committee gave us, and it looks different now than the one that's here. This draft, the totals are different. And then I had the paperwork, the preliminary paperwork that Commissioner Tran handed out with his plan. And... That seems to be about, that seems to be the same. But when I did the math, I was not coming up with... Where did you get the numbers on the cash reserve? That's my question. Because I think you said five hundred and some thousand, five hundred and thirty thousand?
Well, on my plan, when she plugged in numbers, it came at four hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Okay, and where, and how, where does that, I mean, when I start adding up numbers off the certificate, I'm not coming up with those, with anything less. I mean, with anything surplus. I'm actually coming up with a negative number off of that plan.
Yeah, because a lot of that money's coming from somewhere else, because when you go into the general, let me do my... I went through line by line, and I'm full disclosure, budgeting is not my forte, but I try my best. So when I went through and I start going line by line on the general fund, like county commissioner, county clerk, county treasurer, attorney, all stuff, if you look at it here, everything in green is from twenty-twenty-five numbers. Those came from the twenty-five budgets, okay?
And I got that right.
Okay, so anything that's not in green is actually what we proposed, what the BAC proposed moving into twenty-twenty-six. And the reason why I had to do that is because certain things we already owe money on. Like, for instance, juvenile detention, I couldn't go back to twenty-twenty-five numbers because that cost actually went up. We have to pay one thirty-five. So that's where Jennifer, I needed Jennifer's help figuring out what part of the budget you can't mess with. Makes sense?
Yeah.
So like dispatch was fifty grand. Well...
It has to be two hundred and forty.
So how much?
Two hundred and forty needs to be in there for dispatch.
Well, I put two hundred, so that's why we had...
It has to be two forty.
Okay, so...
I'm happy to go through and give you all the changes that I know, so...
So dispatch is now two forty.
That's right.
Okay.
So let me...
Juvenile detention's one thirty-five, health board appropriation, I had, well, can we go right from the top? Let's go right from the top, okay? And where's the county, the one the BAC did, this one here? Nope, that's not it. I have so many budgets. Okay, so that would be on page six, six A.
Of your budget?
No, of, of, of the BAC budget. Go to the BAC budget.
Okay.
I based all my numbers off of their numbers.
I have some instructions from Greg also.
And twenty-twenty-five numbers?
Yeah, so on the county commissioners, the twenty-twenty-five numbers was ninety thousand, three fifty. I used the twenty-twenty-six number, which is seventy thousand, seven fifty.
On what?
On county commissioner.
So county commissioner, unless you're making a resolution to change things now, needs to be left alone
Right.
at the old number.
Right.
So you have to change that. Who's making the final changes?
So you want the change to be the ninety thousand, three fifty?
No, seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand, seven fifty.
No, it can't. That's what it can't be unless you're going to make a new salary resolution right now. Because it won't...
Our salary's at sixty-four.
So, but you're adding two commissioners.
Divide sixty-four by five, not three.
So you have to have a new salary resolution. So that's why when we changed the clerks and the duty she was doing, we had to do a salary resolution before we could change that in the budget. So if we're gonna budget for something, the move needs to be made. So you can leave it in there and change it later and put your extra in the general, but you have to budget for it.
Okay, my... When I went into this whole thing, that is a conversation we're gonna have in January, okay?
Okay, so then you have to budget for the additional commissioners.
That will be in, in the cash reserve. Because the cash reserve will grow. Everything I want to do is put everything in the cash reserve. Everybody operates at the same level as twenty-twenty-five. Under this, under the BAC plan, this is their numbers that we're starting off with. Their only cash reserve's one twenty-eight, okay?
So where's nine-one-one again on the BACs? What page?
They didn't budget enough.
Right.
Which I thought was...
Yeah, but what page?
Six A.
Six A.
That's dispatch. They put two hundred grand, but you're saying that should be two forty.
That has to be. It, I mean, it makes it look nice, but that's not what you're going, that's not what you're projected to spend. So you have to put what you're projected to spend in there, and that's what I'm trying to tell you with the commissioners. You have to put what you're projected to spend.
I do not see a six A.
Six A, six A right there.
Yeah, six.
On the new one that they passed out, it doesn't have six A. I don't know why. This is the old copy. That's why I was all confused.
Man, see, this gets all messed up.
You printed out? Not like that, I'm sorry. Here, here's BAC. There's BAC, and we go in, there's six.
I'm gonna go back to doing what I was doing.
I don't think we're ready for this. So I got a six A on BAC's original first draft.
Right.
And I do not see nine-one-one in it.
It says dispatch.
Oh, dispatch. And it's at two hundred thousand and it needs to be two forty.
It needs to be two forty is what she signed.
So you take, put that over there somewhere on yours, right?
Right, so I just add another, two forty on mine.
Okay.
All right.
I mean, again, I mean, I'm still just not... I'm not seeing the numbers.
Just, just...
Just let Sam write them down, and then he can give them to you.
Well, I mean, I'm not seeing, on the fifty, fifty-nine point nine mills, and I see on, on your plan, you have a tax of eight thou, eight million, three hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And then available resources, counting carryovers from general fund, appraisers, election, public safety, Knox, Knoxwee's, Roden Bridge, and EMS is another four million, five hundred and seventy-seven, three hundred and, four million, five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. That's a total of twelve million, eight hundred and eighty-two, three twenty-four. And then when you start looking at expenditures, it's at thirteen million, three hundred and fourteen is the number I get. So when you try to take the budget of twelve million from thirteen, you come up with a negative number. So I'm, either I'm not seeing resources in there or...
Where'd you get that sheet?
I made that sheet. By looking at your numbers. That's what I was up, you know, looking at your numbers, looking at BAC's numbers, I got the same things.
I'm not even sure how you got my numbers.
Off a sheet that you handed me, and then twenty-twenty-five budget.
Because we, I got part of that number, and I was gonna talk to you guys about, for the rest of it tonight. Because there was no, there's, there's numbers in here that I don't have numbers for. Like, how much is in the jailhouse tax? How much money is in there?
Um, that did a lot better this year.
Yeah.
Right now, it's budgeted in twenty-twenty-five, six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, zero eight four.
I understand that, but how much?
Oh, I'm sorry, jailhouse tax. I thought you meant the revenue from the inmates. That's, that's what did a lot better this year, the jailhouse tax. Probably is about the same.
I'm just, I mean, I'm looking at numbers, you said last, at the last meeting, and you handed this sheet.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you. You handed off this sheet that said, and I wrote, I wrote up there, and you had these numbers, and so...
So what are your numbers? Okay, you got, you got the last sheet. This is the sheet I was working on all week. This sheet right here.
Which one is it? This, the new sheet here or this one?
David.
I'm, I'm...
David, listen to me. Look at me. I don't know where this came from. I didn't give this information to anybody. The only information I have is right here in this little tablet. When this was handed to me and says Sam on here, I'm like, okay, great, let me look it over. I haven't, this is the first time I'm seeing, it's the first time I'm seeing Susan's, too. I've seen the BACs. I've been analyzing the BACs, so when Susan's...
Well, it changed from their original.
By the, I know that, but this is my first time seeing it, so you grilling me is not helping the situation.
Well, I'm not, I'm not meaning to grill you. What I'm trying to do is figure it out. And if we get stuff coming in from so many different directions, I'm not ready to, you know, to make a decision on whose plan I'm gonna accept when I got four and two different versions of yours.
Well, you don't have to accept any of them. You can, you can get your Sharpie out and put anything you want on any of them.
All I'm asking for is for the three of us to sit down tonight. This is what I thought we were gonna do, sit down tonight and go line by line through the budgets and figure out what the best...
So, last meeting, we did not determine whose budget we was even going to do. So you're gonna go line by line on whose?
That's why I asked the question. Who do you want to start off with first? And you guys said me, let's go with mine. Then we can work on Susan's.
I actually said we seen yours, seen BAC, let's start with Susan's.
Okay, well, then start with Susan's.
I mean, I, no, I'm just saying, I, it's whatever you guys want to do, because I don't...
Sir, you're the chair.
I am the chair.
Tell me, tell me what you want to do and we'll do it.
Um, let's start with yours, since you already had your numbers there and...
So the county commissioners pay, we're gonna leave that alone, right, for now? Commissioner Melbourne?
What do you, what do you mean by leave it alone? Leave it alone to which projected number?
Seven, seven, seventy thousand, seven hundred and fifty.
So the problem that you're going to run into is if you do that, and then you don't change the salaries, then you're going to have under budgeted.
Mm-hmm.
But right now, as it stands, with the number that it is, you can project exactly what you'll need to fulfill that responsibility. And that's what you should do, because that's what I was proposing you do for nine-on-one, or you might get yourself in trouble.
You're gonna repeat twenty-twenty-five's ninety thousand, because that's where that ninety thousand is, is twenty-twenty-five's budget, not twenty-twenty-six.
What did you say, the commissioner?
I had to get back to it now. It was, well, for budget, proposed budget for twenty is seventy thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Current year is ninety thousand, three fifty.
And that's still short, right?
Probably.
It is, it's still short.
So let me, let me just do this.
And then... That's the same in the, the old, the first version of the...
BAC.
BAC.
Mm-hmm.
And... There is no six A for the current version of BAC.
That's why she just handed you the copy.
Oh, okay.
So it needs to be one thirteen, five fifty, if you want to project what you're doing right now, because you don't know and you haven't remedied that yet, so... Which one do I, okay, I'm gonna write it on. I'm just gonna go on the budget.
Okay, so let me ask this question. For the sake of budget, can we just plug in a number?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think that you need to plug in the, as things are, as things stand right now, you have to project that number.
Okay.
Just like as things stand right now for nine-on-one, you have to project that number.
I'm not arguing with you about that. All right, so I stand corrected, so remove the seven, seventy thousand, just put one thirteen, five fifty in there. The county clerk, I have one hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Okay, on that one, I have, I have notes from Greg, because he couldn't be here. He said if we're going with your plan.
Yeah.
Okay, if we're going with your plan, we have to, what, what did everybody's increase by? One point four percent?
Yes.
And you took everybody back down one point four percent?
That's what I wanted to do, yeah.
Okay, so the ones that didn't change, Sam said they got the one point four percent before they got, or the ones that had a change, they got the one point four percent before they got the additional duties taken away. So he says you have to take one point four percent off of those ones. So that one, we have to take one point four percent off of.
Are you doing the math?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so now, what was the amount for the, okay, one thirteen, three fifty?
Yeah, the clerk was one thirty-five, three eighty-four, and she's removing one point four percent?
Well, we'd have to take the, the one point four from the one forty-three, three seventy-seven, because it went up from that, and then they subtracted the changes, so it'd be...
And then you have to take out the ten thousand.
Whatever the difference was.
Because if last year's budget was one forty-three and they gave them a one point four percent pay raise this year, we have to take it out of one forty-three, okay? But we also took out ten thousand.
This is on your plan. This is your plan.
Yes, sir.
So I thought you went, went flat to twenty-twenty-five. And then, and then to keep that one point four, that's what you said last time.
Well, they were supposed to take out ten thousand, but on the, on the proposed budget, they only took out seven nine nine three. So they must have added something for maybe some postage or something like that, so they, they left some...
Because the number's still the same on Susan's budget.
Yeah, so...
That number didn't change. Because my plan is exactly what Susan was saying, because I felt that she was right in her assertion that we should go flat for one year and one year only. Makes sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, sir, sir, can I have, have a, just toss it to you, please? Just throw it. Okay, Susan changed. The county treasurer went down to one seventy-two, and I have, county treasurer, I have one seventy-five. So I'm just gonna mark the difference.
I see one seventy-two on yours.
And then on hers, the attorney went down to one twenty-six, and mine is four, I mean, sorry, four twenty-six, eight, mine was four seventy-seven. Actually, on mine, I, I went back to twenty-twenty-five, on, on the list I have here, I went down to four seventy-one is where I went.
Okay, so where it says here on yours, four twenty-six, eight hundred for the proposed budget years, and four seventy-one, eight eighty in the twenty-twenty-five, is that what we're put, I mean, cause you also said one seventy-five for the clerk, but I see one seventy-two, five forty-nine.
That's the treasurer, isn't it?
Or maybe that, yeah, that's the treasurer, I'm sorry. I mean, the numbers that you're, you're reading off at first are the numbers that are in the proposed budget year.
Don't know. I, I wish we had, uh, the, the budget that everybody asked for, cause I, I don't see that. That's what we are missing.
I don't have those numbers.
I don't even, I've never, I've never seen the, the ones that everybody asked for.
Which ones, that the BAC?
No, the departments and elected officials, yeah. Okay, okay, well, we won't worry about it then.
The beginning, the beginning deal with all the officials was the sixty-two point five that we, that we approved. Yeah, in the beginning. Sixty-two. I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a recess, I mean, you guys can continue to, to work on these numbers, because I'm not seeing...
Let me know if you can look that real quick, I use the restroom, and let me know. Her, her numbers changed from my numbers, almost identical, it's just the, the dollar amounts are different, see what I'm saying? I'm not sure why the dollar amounts are different.
I know. I know. She put the right, right number for nine-one-one in there, and that changed the reserve, that changed the, um, the total. So, Jennifer, when you were helping Sam with that, when he was changing everything, like, uh, bringing everybody back to, did he bring everybody, like, the fair board, they cut from ten to five, did he bring those back up to ten? Okay, he left them at five. Everything, everyone that was cut, gotta, kept the cut. And then, so he kept their cuts, and he cut some more.
I don't know if he cut more, um, I know that he, when we first got the numbers, it was everybody that was an additional, took in the consideration.
Okay.
If you would take that last one that Susan did, cause she, by your instructions from your meeting the other day, before she left town.
Okay.
If you take that one...
Okay.
And let against the BAC one, the last one from BAC there was a tax reduction also.
Okay, 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 I'll do that.
Both of them were tax reductions.
Okay, okay.
Or real reductions, I'm sorry.
Okay.
But they do that.
So they're both, okay.
Okay, and when he was talking about adding it up, and that thirteen million and the twelve million, the difference for that comes along is your other income.
Okay.
Coming in, because the only thing you have to worry about is page thirty-one, that's the one you're gonna print in the paper.
I did talk to, uh, I talked to Ben for the sheriff, and he said he made some changes, so, to sheriffs.
Won't you put, this is the BAC? Did I mark the wrong one? Close to hers, right?
Close to hers, but the numbers she's reading off your sheet marked Chinese.
Right, because the numbers, I flip-flop back and forth between twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six, cause I was just trying to cut, see? So for this one here, that's a second.
So, Sue, on yours, the only thing different between your, this one and Susan's, is forty thousand for dispatch.
That, yeah, that's what I was trying to tell you.
I changed the bottom line, forty thousand dollars right there. Yeah. The difference between used to.
You just had to add one there.
Yeah. So her cash reserve, my cash reserve is the same.
Yes, but you're starting, your proposed resources may be a little or starting different, I don't know what...
Yeah, I don't know.
What those are.
I think she used yours, Sam, for her, she just changed the nine-on-one, because the number was not correct to what we're gonna propose we do.
Cause my starting, my starting number was one point six mil. Hers, I'm sorry, one point six nine seven, and hers is one point six eight five, I'm not sure where that number came from.
Yeah, why would the resources available be different on any of these? They're different on all of them.
I think, uh, you've got new numbers that you were trying to plug in, and new, and, and different numbers came on the, wherever these, however these drafts got made up, I think, uh...
Did you do these, or did Susan do these?
Susan did all these and emailed them to you.
So...
So the thing is, what I'm trying to tell you is, when, when Susan was talking to us that one night, she says we should do flat, and that piqued my interest, so I started plugging numbers, but I never spoke to Susan, I never gave Susan my numbers.
Okay, well, I mean, I, I, if this is not your, your draft, did you have a draft?
No, I didn't have, this is the only draft I have, is right here, yes.
You didn't give her your numbers or your paper, but you did dictate what your numbers and changes were. You said, everybody that was cut, I left them cut. Everybody else that didn't get a cut, that got a, uh, increase of some sort, I brought them back to last year, and so she probably just used your dictation and did it.
That's how I used on, on getting these numbers that I worked on.
And in addition to that, Greg told me, well, that means that everybody that did get a cut, that didn't get brought back to last year, they actually got a raise on top of their cut, because they had the one point four, and he told me to take the one point four out of those budgets, and then he told me I had to take, I mean, you already did something with sheriff, so I don't gotta do anything to that, but the budgets that got a cut, because we changed services in those offices, we have to take the one point four out of those.
But the intent was the ones that we cut, we cut for a purpose.
That's right.
Because we didn't think they needed the money.
That's right.
So you really didn't wanna take them back to twenty-twenty-five.
Right, but he said to cut the one point four off of those as well.
Well, some of them didn't, like EMS, I didn't cut, I left his numbers alone, cause his numbers stayed the same.
That's right.
Okay.
So like on certain people, like on my sheet...
Well, they actually need ten thousand more if theirs is the same, because of that contract.
So like, for instance, IT was twenty-twenty-five's number, but I got an asterisk on it, because in IT, we budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, because we saved money by going contractual.
My point is, we, we're, we're budgeting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for IT, do you need two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for IT going into twenty-twenty-six?
Well, if you are to project the thing that we just approved, um, what did that, what, what did that equal? That's what it would cost us in twenty-twenty-six, but we have not, we haven't said that we're gonna use them all twenty-twenty-six, so I guess this would be worst-case scenario is two hundred and fifty thousand.
What I'm saying is, I didn't change that number, but on my, on my paperwork, there's an asterisk on there, so that I can talk to you guys, and say, can we lower that from two fifty to one fifty? That's another hundred thousand dollars we can throw into the general fund.
Okay.
Into the cash reserve.
Okay. Uh, I can, I can...
Cause the corner, the corner, she has it at fifty. She has it at fifty, my number, not on this document, on this document, my number's thirty-five. This is, this is, this is, this is why I was getting frustrated, cause I'm like, these numbers have never left my satchel.
So, work, work on updating, so that we can all be on the same page, because we gotta have something that's gonna go to publication in, what, five days? So we can't walk away from here, tonight, without approving something.
Do you have access to this program?
To get you the finals now.
When does she do that?
The eighth, eighth.
Now, we can move these dates back, but...
Double check and see the last day that you should do your, um...
Publication.
Your hearing. I know those have changed since I was clear. I will say that on the corner, um, corner costs have gone up, so I think that that's why, um, they have posted fifty.
Okay.
Yeah, they've, they've really gone up after here.
So, alright, for the sake of the conversation, with Susan's plan versus the ones she created for me...
They're the same.
They're almost, they're almost identical. There's, the, the cash reserve is four hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars, um...
Okay, so where is the cash reserve on that?
It's on page six A.
On both yours and hers, right?
Yes, yes.
Where is it?
But on hers, on mine, the mill levy is gonna be fifty-nine point nine, and on hers, the mill levy is gonna be...
Okay, no, I, 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 I'm still, I'm still, uh, getting both of those deals. Now, you said on hers, okay, so where's the cash reserve?
It's going to be under subtotal on the right-hand column.
Okay, so the four, four hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-five.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I see it.
Okay.
And that number comes from where? Is that a rollover from somewhere?
I believe it is. I'm, she was trying to explain to me, and like I said, that's, this is not my forte, so, um, do you know where it comes from, Carolyn?
That would be, right, your cash reserve is gonna be what you have left over, you're estimating, and it's based on your estimated revenue, your estimated expenses, so it is, it's an ambiguous number to begin with, you have no idea.
Right.
For sure, that's the big end of the year.
Did you know you...
She's telling you that she's gonna try, you're building your cash reserve back.
So when you come back to the certificate, at the beginning there, where it's showing, total expenditures for general fund is the same, yeah, three, three million, five hundred and seventy-five, zero, eight, one, and then when you go down, start going through here, and you do all these with the, the appraiser, you end up with a total of seventeen million, two hundred and eleven, six thirty-eight, and then your taxes is eight million, two hundred and ninety-eight, three seventy-nine, this is on hers, and then you add in the available resources, and the difference between those two numbers is what's gonna give you either a surplus or a negative, correct?
And they're all estimates, because what you, when you say you're adding all your resources, you're estimating what your sales tax is gonna be, what you...
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so far, I have not come up with that kinda numbers on, on these, on these plans.
I'm looking. I'm getting too old for this, boys. No, because I mean, let me look at page thirty-one, I'm gonna see page thirty-one. As soon as, and page thirty-one, of the last one that she did too. This thirty-one is what Jake got published, page thirty-one, the page he got published.
Page thirty-one.
Yeah. It's a note, your notice said the budget came. Okay, now this one here, which, this is this one?
That's Susan's.
This one's Susan's?
Yes.
Okay. See that? The two things I would look at. For your benefit estimations, look at page thirty-one of Susan's.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Your mill levy in two thousand and twenty-four was fifty-nine point nine oh seven. Mill levy in two thousand and twenty-five was fifty-nine point nine.
Mm-hmm.
Projected mill levy here is fifty-nine point eight five four.
Mm-hmm.
Now, that is above the nu- neutral rate by...
Of five seven point five five.
By two point, two point three mils, but you're still, your mill levy is still below what your mill levy was last year.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm looking at all that, I'm, I'm just...
Where's the BAC one?
Yeah.
Okay.
When I start doing numbers, I'm not coming up with the...
And if you look at your expenditures, the difference between the BAC one, the last BAC one, and the one Susan did, if you, look at page thirty-one again, and look at your...
The BACs here.
That's, the B, the one you guys produced is fifty-nine point one two four.
Well, this one, the one we turned in was fifty-nine point seven, but this one here's point fifty-nine point oh three five, so I'm not sure where it came from, but...
Well, yeah, I mean...
Yeah, oh, yeah, here, here's, yeah, okay.
So am I right? It's fifty-nine point one two four?
First one was...
The one, the ones that...
The one that you turned in.
Yeah, let me see.
Yeah, this one, this one that they just, last week.
Yeah, that's the one we turned in.
Okay.
Cause it was less...
It was fifty-nine point one two four.
It was ju- almost eight tenths of a mil less than what it was the year before.
In the...
Yes. Okay, so it was fifty-nine point one something.
Okay.
Fifty-nine point one two four.
Cause that's what we ended up doing going down, we weren't down below the neutral, okay? But look at, on, this new one you've got, and it's gone up to fifty-nine point oh three five, so I have no idea why, it was changed, it's changed for some reason, my command.
That's the one there?
Uh-huh, this one here was changed, and that one you just showed me.
Yeah.
So the only thing I can think of that would be different is the forty thousand or on the nine-one-one.
That's right.
Can you think of anything else that should've changed, Joe? Well, yeah, I was, and I was gonna say, see, what, that resolution that you passed...
We had to add ten thousand to the EMS for that contract they signed with Striker.
Okay, and then, but you took out the, you took out the money out of the, the clerks, and then we, but you decided to put it back?
Mm-mm, no. No, we didn't put it back.
Okay, cause I thought you said the, see, that, that, I'm just trying to think why it would've changed, uh, cause I know the forty thousand is different.
Yeah.
But other than that, I'm not...
There's ten thousand for EMS also.
Okay, so that's probably why.
So that's fifty thousand difference there.
But if you look at your expenditures then, the proposed budget expenditures, or proposed annual arm tax, okay, then go over to page...
Six A.
I'm looking at the pages, it's got your comparative, this is your taxes page, this page thirty-one is all taxes, and that's what you gotta publish. I'm trying to find the page that's got your, based on your total expenses for the year, which ones, year in and year out, which ones those were.
Six A.
Look at this, six A.
Yep, yep.
If she's looking, if she's looking at the new BAC...
Yeah.
She won't have it, that one's missing it, so here...
Well, there should've been, that was what's strange, is because in my copy, there was a six A.
And, and hers, there's a six A.
It's a six A, but it's on the back.
Oh, it is?
Yes, it is there. Okay, Sam, that shows the difference in your expenditures for those three years. And even though you're put, taking the mill levy down from what it was last year, you're still showing additional expenditures of about three hundred thousand dollars.
Additional expenditures, okay.
Six A, I'm just talking, I'm just talking about on the tax funds.
Okay.
Okay? Cause you've got a lot of funds that you've got expenditures on that are non-tax funds.
Okay.
That's probably what's confusing to some of you, I, okay. And see, your employee benefit, Joe, you correct me if I'm saying anything wrong here, on the employee benefit, we, the budget committee proposed an eight percent increase. We had no idea, we were guessing, and so we had an eight percent increase, and therefore, if, if your insurance went up that much, I mean, your, your costs went up that much. If it didn't, the idea was the extra would go to your reserve fund.
Okay.
Or you could move it over to the general fund, but it would, no, 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 employee benefit reserve fund, because that's where the taxes are coming in. But you have, uh, Susan would tell you, if she was here, she has some leeway on reserves that go into the general fund, you all do, I mean, it's not legally, that's what I wanna say, it's not she legally. Legally, she can't move some monies into the general fund, but legally, there's some monies that she could move into the general fund. And she said she was, if I remember right, when she talked to us, she said she was very conservative on her estimate for sales tax, which we're hoping that that's the way it is, and that business is booming, and everything goes great, and you, you're taking a lot more in sales tax than you did this year, so therefore, that's gonna build some reserves and balances, et cetera. Cause see, your jail, and that budget, you can use that money in there for, I mean, that's why it pays for the jail, and the payment on the jail. And a lot of the expenses out there come from sales tax funds. And if you remember right, the only budget we did, she didn't decrease, when she talked to you, or Greg talked to you about the one point four percent, or, or the ones that we cut, was the sheriff. And we did go ahead and give him the four point eight percent or so.
Four point three, yeah.
Whatever it was.
Yeah.
May I ask you a question, Sam?
Me? Yeah.
Yeah. So, you put everyone flat from last year except for who they cut, and, um, they cut. You know, you took about fifty thousand from county attorneys last year's budget, that's a lot, I don't think they could do that.
We did in several of those funds, we cut money out of them.
From the, we all, but you cut them, and then Sam cut them.
You're looking at page six A?
Well, no, I'm just looking at, uh, yeah, six A.
Which one are you talking about?
Six, six A, uh, county attorney.
Okay, we took money out of there.
Well, yeah, you took county, you took it out of what he asked for, so he asked for four eighty-seven, and you said, no, you can have four seventy-seven. So, you gave him a little bit of a raise from last year, but last year, he operated off of four seventy-one, and then Sam cut him all the way down to four twenty-six. I don't know how they're gonna possibly do that, I don't think they can.
Okay, hang on, just hang on.
I'm hanging.
What does it say there for county attorney?
Um, I can't see it.
Four seventy-one.
Four seventy, oh, okay, so, so this thing, oh, now I get what you're saying, these are Susan's made-up numbers, okay, I understand, okay.
It, it has my name on it, and it is what it is, but.
I understand, I understand.
This is my list.
Okay, I am very sorry, Sam, I didn't mean to accuse you of that.
No, it's alright.
I'm just gonna doodle on this then, okay? I'm not gonna take it as yours.
Yeah, I'm looking in.
Because tonight, I was gonna bring this to you tonight and talk about it.
Understood.
And so, when this was presented to us.
I have a headache, so I'm a little slow, I'm sorry.
Is this Susan's? Yes, she may get this.
Yes, that's Susan's proposed budget. I'm just gonna write on your, no, I'm gonna write on the budget committee's proposed budget, I'm gonna go from there.
Sure.
Because the others, I don't, I mean, it's not yours, so I'm not gonna, not even gonna trust that there, so. Just gonna use the budget committee's, or, back to default, budget committee's budget.
Braver.
Present.
Election. Roden Bridge. No sheriff.
The one policy claims you're all less than last year's mill levy.
No sheriff. Sheriff.
You're talking about his, his input?
I don't see his sheet.
Yeah, I didn't either.
Yeah. That's not in Susan's.
Cause the reason, the reason I asked, the reason I asked about the tax thing, Micah.
Uh-huh.
Was the, cause.
It was a, probably a crazy deal trying to make this many copies.
What I was told was, instead of coming out of the, the ad valorem, we could take money out of that jailhouse tax.
Yes, that's correct.
And fund him.
That's correct.
And then use that extra money, throw it back into the.
That's correct.
And that's where I was going with.
Okay, that's correct, that you can do, yes, you, that is correct, you can do that.
But I didn't have access to, my understanding as of June, that kitty is two million dollars.
Yes.
So, there's two million dollars sitting in that, in that, that fund.
Yes.
And we were gonna pull X amount of money for the sheriff to give him.
Yes. And he also is gonna be able to offset, set his budget with his inmates that he has right now out of county.
Okay.
So.
Plus, see, plus, they're, they're doing a great job of increasing the numbers, and, I mean, he's got that compensation from the other sheriff, but they were increasing their income.
Right.
From inmates.
It's not in any of them, so she had to find it, yeah.
Are you looking for the sales tax?
It was the sheriff's budget.
It's gonna be back here, I don't know. Okay, there's, pretty out there, we're looking at Roden Bridge. Electoral stability. Now, health, elections, the razor.
Cause there's an opioid fund that belongs to the sheriff, correct? I'm sorry?
That's no longer.
Oh.
That's just a carryover money that's just sitting in there. Have fun, it's got, it's got nothing spin in it. Well, you know, David, I'm not sure I've got.
It, uh, she went to find the copies on them.
I mean, it should be right here, it should be right here in front of Roden Bridge.
No, it wasn't, it hasn't been there the whole time, cause I kept looking at the old draft, and I didn't see it.
It was in your original draft that you guys had.
Yeah, I was.
And then, in the, you know, and I was using, cause I thought, yeah, it doesn't matter what I thought.
Okay, see, it should be like, it says page twenty-three.
I stayed up all night.
On this front page.
Hey, it's, it's service, service before sell.
Yeah, but I plug it in numbers that don't even matter.
Right. It's what I get for listening. It is, it is on page twenty-three of the original.
Is that the, is that the revenues on twenty-three?
Yes. Cause it's right after sewer district, here it is, right here, if you wanna see it.
Yeah, I got, well, see, my, I don't have twenty-three, I got twenty-two, and then I go to twenty-four, so, okay.
Did you see it, Ben?
What?
Yeah, that's where it should be.
What is it?
The sheriff's.
In this who's who plan?
This is the original BAC document that they gave us.
Oh, yeah, I got, I got the original, but, uh, then, I'm, I'm gonna tell you right now, numbers aren't matching up from plan to plan.
No, they're not.
Yeah, so, when it comes to resources available and, and that, so, I mean, how, how do you know which is right, which is right?
Well, then, okay.
I'm just gonna go back to default to the budget committee.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just throwing the rest of those away, they can just have them, I'm just using the budget committees.
Which one, the new one or the old?
The old one, the old one, that's what I'm saying, just.
Fifty.
You can go, you can have those. The budget committee, that's the only one I'm gonna use.
Do you still have those copies in your car from last night?
Yeah, I gave, I gave her one, this is the original that nobody's messed with.
I have one.
Okay. But I do know that, um, Ben sent something for the sheriff, so something should've changed for the sheriff.
He did.
Okay.
He did.
Re- like, yesterday.
I don't know what it was, yesterday.
I don't either.
So, if we're gonna use the original BAC, what can, can we go?
Were before, what she sent me was before yesterday. Well, Ben told me he sent it to Susan, so.
Alright, so, this one, this one.
So, do you wanna go line by line, using the original?
Hang on, hang on, hang on, let me get, where did you throw them?
Right over here, I can have it.
There's all them.
Let's just take the original budget, the, that was their purpose.
Yeah, here's the.
Let's, let's go through theirs and add or take off what we need.
So, so this here that you passed out last deal.
No, this is just a copy of what the, I didn't do this.
That's what I got last meeting.
Well, I'm gonna turn it over to Jennifer.
And there were numbers that I used.
I'm here if you want to, Joe, you know what's in, you have your coffee with you.
You know, you know where I got the numbers from the last meeting? Me and Jennifer were sending back to her little thing.
I have an original draft.
Well, this is what.
I didn't give you this, bro, I don't know where you got that from. Because it came out, the numbers that Jennifer provided for.
Harry, this is the new thing Susan sent.
It might have, it was one of those little receipt things.
Trying to find the original.
Okay, so now I got one plan, which is the BAC's original.
That's what I got, so we're going back to default. So, those.
Alright.
Aren't the same as this. Okay. So.
All this.
And then I have Greg's, I have Greg's page here that I'm also using, this page, Greg gave us on a different page, I think.
This is the one.
Name is your hairbrush.
What is it?
It's where he has highlighted changes, I also have that, so.
Well, can you make copies, cause I, if I got it.
This'll work, this'll work.
Yeah.
Well, you know how, hey, you know how you can tell if it's the real one or the old one?
Eighty-one, ninety-eight, six fifty-two is a tax collective.
Do you guys hear me?
What's that?
When you can tell, one way you can tell the original from the other one is look, the original has a page folded.
Oh, well, it also has a different draft stamp. It's got like a.
And it's also got our, my writing on it, so.
Here's an original right here, if you need it.
I'm not bashing your stamp, we improvised. We couldn't find that.
You wanna.
Couldn't find that, so we improvised.
I applaud you for improvising, no judgment here, I was just trying to articulate it.
Well, this is, is, this is the doc, this is the certificate, the thing that they gotta look at.
I'm taking my scribbles off here, Mr. Beerbauer, and then I could.
Thirty-one, I think.
Which one do you have?
Yeah, this, yes, that one right there.
Yeah, yeah, they.
Is that what you're needing?
Yeah, they would like, they would like some of those. Would you guys feel it, would you?
She leave you?
Yeah. We got Ann Payson back here, she's pacing.
Too much sitting today, so.
So, what do you wanna do, we wanna go line by line?
Yep.
Okay. What page are you using, page thirty-one? Those are your tax funds, I'm just asking, I'm not suggesting, I'm just asking.
That should be the one we should be using.
So, it's, so we're gonna go to thirty-one?
Cause that's what's gonna get published, right?
That's correct, page thirty-one is the only thing that'll be published, well, along with the certificate that says what time and date your hearing is.
Okay, so, thirty-one.
Well, we need to break it down further.
That's what I was gonna say, is like, because in the general.
Okay, so, let's go back up to the front.
Six A.
Thank you.
And start with, thank you.
Yes.
Start with, um, general, is that six A?
Where'd you get this from?
Six and six A.
Keep everything.
Okay, this must've been our second one in here, this was our first one, this must've been our second budget.
Yes. This is the one that Greg revised after, forgot the.
After they added some stuff. Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, this is gonna be confusing to you guys, because they're.
Well, I mean, you look at six A.
Yeah, six A, we can just start long through six A.
You look at your total expenditures of three million, two hundred and thirty-five dollars, and, or, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars, and you come around here to your, um, that's on general, the general fund, you come around here to your, uh, page one, and it's not even the same number.
No, it's not even close.
No, and that, the one that we, that you guys, that was presented to us, and that we distributed, the, yeah, um, it's not even the same as the one that Jennifer just printed.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, these numbers don't match.
I know.
From six A to page one, in, in the original.
That number doesn't show up on page one, because.
Should.
One on six A is twenty twenty-six. The only thing that shows up on page one is twenty twenty-five, that's it.
But the.
So, why does it say twenty twenty-six?
Well, it shows total expenditures twenty twenty-five.
This is the one that BAC that, that was emailed to us, and these numbers, we can't figure out why they're different.
Mr. Smith?
Once it's been adjusted, once you've been accepted, twenty twenty-five is the only number that you have on.
I have no idea.
Isn't that all?
Blank column.
Okay.
Well, I don't, it's not correct.
Well, I thought that was your tax.
I'm just trying to figure out where's, if I've got the correct one here, everybody.
That's what you're gonna fill in, yeah. The tax, sorry, for that budget, I.
Okay, well, I'm, okay.
Okay.
Well, it doesn't even match up with the current, with the twenty twenty-fives expenditures either.
Okay, this is the last.
I'm totally confused, so.
You're.
Is this the last or the first BAC?
You got three million, two hundred and thirty-six, five eighty-five on, on general fund expenditures for twenty twenty-five.
No, that, no, that's what we started.
And I don't see that on the twenty twenty-five current year, or.
You know, you guys are at a real disadvantage, because I don't think there's, I, I think you're missing one of the forms.
There it is. Nope, that is.
Where's the fifty-nine, where's the one that shows fifty-nine point two?
The, the.
Mill levy's at fifty-nine point two, so.
This one says fifty-nine point one two four.
I know, that's what I'm saying, okay, and then the, the next one you look at shows fifty-nine point seven something.
What did I say, I mean, the pages, the pages, the pages don't match up either, I mean.
Take a pill.
Yeah.
When, when, what does the law say that you have to have this adopted by, what is the date?
September twentieth? We have to budget it in, right?
Well, we have to publish it.
You have to publish it ten days before your hearing.
I wish I'd brought them sheets with me.
But what my thinking is, I mean, what is the last, the last day that you have to?
It has to go to the state on October the first.
Yeah, but, but you gotta have it, you gotta have it before that.
We had to have it to the clerk.
In order to get it to the state by the first, and have your publication date, and your, your meeting, you, you about have, you're stuck with the schedule of nine three, nine fifteen, ten one.
Well, it's, it's an overnight thing to the state, because I've sent them overnight before, you know, when I was out to the school, but we used to have ours, I happened to be there before October the first, but, I mean, I just didn't know what your county did, cause you're on the fiscal year.
I can pull, let me pull the.
Can you, or, or I'll text you, whatever. I think they did give me, they, I mean, they've tried to give you everything they had, but they've given you so many budgets here, that it's almost confusing, and, uh, because I haven't, I haven't found the original BAC budget yet. I mean, Micah thinks she has it, and.
Well, this is.
This one they presented to us at the table.
This one, this one and this one is the one that they presented, I've been hanging on.
Cause he, cause here's the thing from Greg, when he had to adjust, what we did is, all we did was take what we started with. Okay, 'cause he, 'cause he, 'cause here's the thing from Greg, when he had to adjust, what we did is, all we did was take what we started with, and then what we reduced it to.
Okay.
To show you that we went down.
Okay. And that's what I'm using to adjust this.
Yeah, and see, and the one, and the biggie was the, uh, the county counselor, we took that down twenty-one thousand, and then the county attorney, we only took down ten thousand.
And that was because the county attorney asked for a twenty-five percent increase for salaries.
Well.
Oh, wow.
And we cut it half.
On the county attorney, but on the count, on the count, on the county attorney, we questioned that, and they both said that we needed two full-time attorneys because of, of the number that was in the courts to go through the system. And that's why we, you need to prepare for that.
So we need to leave the county attorneys alone, not, not move them back to last year?
We, we moved, we, we moved into four seventy-seven on ours, and no one complained.
Okay. Would they be able to take a move back to last year's budget? Or did their contractuals go up?
I don't know what last year's budget was, I don't have.
One seventy-one eight eighty.
How much?
One seventy-one eight eighty, or four seventy-one eight eighty, I'm sorry.
Not, I would say no.
They couldn't, okay, so we're gonna leave that alone?
Because, I mean, if that, was that last year's?
Yes.
It is, four seventy-one eight eighty was last year's?
They must, I know what it was, they gotta have, they gotta.
County attorney was four seventy-one eighty last year. So we actually gave them the grade.
Yeah.
But we decreased, we, we decreased it ten thousand dollars from what he asked for. These were what they, this was what everybody asked for.
Yep.
What do you got for, how far down that list are you, Micah?
I am almost through this BAC one.
Mike, on this one that I've got now, it shows that we had a hundred, that BAC had a hundred and fifty thousand on nine eleven.
That's not near enough, it needs two hundred and forty.
I, I don't need to be two forty, I understand that, but I, but we did, we did put a hundred and fifty in there.
Yeah, and.
So that should have gone up ninety thousand, I mean, that's the only difference.
Yes.
This, this one right here.
'Cause they, what did you do with the treasurer, you down to one?
I just took her back to last year's budget, one seventy-five, six eighty-seven.
Okay, alright. So the coroner, did you bring it back up?
I'm, I'm just gonna leave it alone, uh, for the, what the Budget Committee did.
The coroner's not even, the coroner's not even on this list that they got.
No.
That's because he don't live it.
And the courthouse general, I'm leaving it alone because it's, um, insurance and things.
Yes.
That's why it went up, I remember watching these meetings.
And that's strictly against when you're looking for.
Yeah.
So that's five eighty-four, correct?
Yeah. The custodial, they didn't ask for anything, and so we're not touching anything there.
Yes, and some of those non, whatever, they call them NFOs, whatever, they were, see, we cut every single one of them, we cut the fair, the conservation district, this senior system, okay.
Those are all, we call them non-GO organizations.
Yes.
NGOs, and. The courthouse general, did you bring that down? Or did you leave it at five eighty-four?
Left it alone because.
Okay, I, I, no, I, I'm.
Yeah, because of the insurance.
Yeah. On the district court, where are you at on that?
Uh, didn't get to them yet, district court.
District court was flat.
Yeah.
We didn't make any changes.
Uh, it shows that they went to three forty-nine, it don't, they don't show it flat.
It shows an increase, it shows a ten thousand dollar increase.
I was gonna say, yeah, there, my thing shows a ten thousand dollar.
What did they, what did they get an increase for, did they have contractuals or something?
Mike does show that to Bob Joe, and I don't, I. Is that the, no, that, that's Mark, he asked for ten thousand, but I don't, I didn't think we gave it to him, but this thing here shows we did.
'Cause on mine, I, I went back to last year's grade was three thirty, three thirty-nine, six ninety.
Does yours show the ten thousand increase?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's what mine, that's what this one here shows.
So does it have, did the courts have to have it for contractuals or anything?
Well, we didn't.
This is our budget. No, he's not, they're, they're not even on this one. See, you see.
I don't know where the two thousand came from.
I remember him coming, he was the very first person that we interviewed, and I remember him asking for ten thousand, and I, and I can't remember what it was for, I'd have to go, I would get my book.
Watch the video.
If, he did ask, I remember he asked for that, and it is on here.
Micah, back to the subject of IT.
Yes.
I have two fifty.
I think we need to leave it to be safe, until we know how it shakes out, and then next year, hopefully, we can lower it.
Okay. But if it doesn't, okay, if we don't, let's say mid-year, next year, we don't use the full two fifty?
Yeah.
And it looks like we're not gonna use it, are we allowed to move that money out of that IT fund?
It'll go back to the general.
It'll go back to the gen, alright, cool.
On which one?
IT.
The IT.
If they don't use it all.
See, anything that's under these, and when you look at this budget, where it, over here, it starts with the general fund, and then she's got, these identified here like this, when you get under these here.
Yeah.
This is all general fund.
Okay.
So you can move that money within that one in a lot of different ways, where you can't, if it's employee benefit, or if it's.
Yes.
Seward district, or what, you know what I'm saying, okay, so you've got a lot of leeway there.
And IT asked for three hundred thousand in the budget, but just because we're gonna save so much, we thought it would be really safe to move them down to at least two fifty.
Who asked, who asked for three hundred?
Well, they, IT presented a budget before we changed things, they presented a budget of three hundred thousand.
But even if.
And we felt really safe moving it to two fifty.
But even if you, even if, I, based on what you're saying now, you're only gonna use around a hundred and seventy-five.
Because we're saving a lot of money. Probably.
Yes, yes.
Well, there's fifty thousand for CIC, there's thirty-five thousand for Crawlcan, if we don't get anything done there, and then there's the hundred and nine for, uh, the services.
Yeah.
Okay, now that you spelled it out, that makes sense.
And then there's a few, there's a few licenses and things.
I was just only thinking of stronghold, I, I didn't, wasn't thinking about.
No, Crawlcan's in, yeah.
Yeah, it's expensive.
I'll try and stay.
So we have to publish by September tw, we have to hold our hearing by September twentieth.
Okay, so you can wait and publish, okay, the hearing doesn't have to be se, till September the twentieth.
But we need to, we have to publish.
You gotta have it ten days, so, so you got till September tenth.
At least ten days before that.
Okay, and then what day of the week is that, 'cause you can't, we only, we have to publish on Wednesday or Saturday, so we gotta take the Wednesday or Saturday before September the tenth, what date is that?
The third is what, is the Wednesday, the sixth is a Saturday.
Okay, so you could do, you could wait and publish on the sixth, then.
We're leaving the jury trials in there, that just got put in there last year, it wasn't there in twenty twenty-four, it don't look like.
What was it?
Jury trial, that's the murder trial thing, she's, she's always had, did a fifty thousand dollars.
Well, on this thing for twenty twenty-four, it don't show it being in there.
Yeah, there was zero in twenty twenty-four.
And does it matter if it's in the general fund or in jury trial fund?
I'm going, I'm going to go back with Susan, you asked that question.
Because we could put it in the reserve, and then we would be closer, be able to get bonds or.
We didn't have a murder trial, we'd save fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
And it was rolled into a contingency fund.
Yes, and had always been in it for years.
So we could, we could take all that and put it in a cash reserve fund, and use it to pay for a trial if you had to.
Yeah.
You just gotta be sure you have.
Not, don't spend it, yeah.
Well, yeah, if you do that, though, you gotta be sure you've had budget room down here to spend it, but you don't want it to affect your taxes, because you all have it over here saved, does that make sense?
Yes.
Because you're saving it over here, so you don't want it to affect your taxes. But you gotta be sure that you budget for it, in order to be able to use it, 'cause that's the law, okay, let's get him back, what did you say?
Okay, so you're gonna have to publish on the, the, the tenth.
I'm just trying to buy you some time, so we can figure out which one is.
Well, we need to get a, a, a more, we need to get a accurate numbers, you know.
And, and what we can do is, we can take the spreadsheet, and I'll talk to Greg, we can take our spreadsheet, no, and inhale, our original spreadsheet, had everybody's expenditures last year, what they wanted for this year, and what we recommended, and then we could add a column where you guys changed it or whatever, that would be easier for you to look at than what we're doing here.
Yeah.
Because, is it ten days?
What I'd like to see, uh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is it ten days including the publishing date, Jennifer?
Yes.
So it's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
The day that it's printed in the paper, the day that the public reads it in the paper, you have to wait ten days from that day before you can have a hearing.
And they only publish on Wednesdays and Saturdays?
Yes.
So it'd be the tenth of September is when you have to publish, and she comes back the eighth of September.
Okay.
Right, but usually our cutoff for publication is four o'clock on Monday for the Wednesday edition.
So that means we have to do it by the eighth, now, our decision has to be done, wait, Monday, you said Monday morning?
So, on the way that the Tribune does, we have a cutoff of, if we want in the Wednesday paper, we need to have all of our stuff to them by four o'clock on Monday.
In the form that they can use.
So it'll be Monday, the eighth.
Right, but.
Yeah.
But we can have the meeting in the afternoon, and we'd have to have the meeting in the morning.
Well, and you, I, I, they've made an exception, I mean, you can call the Tribune, I, we could talk to them and say, hey, we can't have that there until seven AM Tuesday morning, is that okay? I, I'm, I'm just, I'm not saying you should do that, I'm suggesting, I have did that before, when I had to have a publication, and I couldn't make whatever it was, and, and have it first thing the next morning, and they'll either say yes or no. And being.
Well, I would say that a regular five-thirty meeting on Monday, the eighth, is not going to get this resolved any, you know, you know, I mean, you bring in, I like the ideal of the spreadsheet, uh, so that we got, uh, you know, a bird's eye view of all the funds right there, and then, like you said, have an extra column to sit down and write down what numbers we're wanting to plug in.
Yes, yes, anything that you wanna change, and that's, and Greg already has that all set up on his computer. And, uh, it would be very easy for him to have this blank column.
'Cause then that way, he can take the numbers that he's wanting to do for, for flat or whatever to get us.
Yeah, we could have a col, see, we can have, we can have ten, we can take this, we can have ten columns.
Well, I, I think, right now, 'cause we're already here, let's work on those numbers, so when those numbers are finalized, and all we have to do is give it to Mr. Monty to plug it in.
Okay.
Are you sick? I'm asking you the same question, you asked me another.
Yeah, because you were sick the other day, and you lied about allergies, is what you said.
So you're working off page six A.
Yeah.
Alright, catch me up, so, uh, start at the beginning, 'cause I was looking at available resources versus expenditures before we ever started, so we're keeping commissioners at ninety thousand, three fifty?
No, the proposed budget, the proposed budget here on this sheet was one thirteen, five eighty-five, that's what it needs to be.
Wait, five eighty-five or five fifty-five?
Either one, it says one thirteen, five eighty-five, that was proposed.
Yeah, we still have to go back to these.
Alright.
Then you have, the clerk, uh, at one thirty-three, four eighty-nine, it was one thirty-five with the Budget Committee, but Greg said if you're taking the one point four away from all of them, you have to take it from those ones that they had changed as well, because they took that, but then they gave an increase, so, one thirty-three, four eighty-nine, okay?
Wait, one thirty-three, four eighty, four, eight, nine?
Yep. Yep.
Treasure?
Treasure took them back to last year, so instead of one seventy-eight, one seventy-five, six seventy-eight, um, the.
Six seventy-eight or six eighty-seven?
Oh, six eighty-seven, I'm sorry.
It's alright.
One seventy-five, six eighty-seven.
I mean, I'm looking at it, and I turned, I didn't, I just didn't wanna turn it.
Alright, Micah, hang on, I, I need to start over.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, start from the first, it's one thirteen, five eighty-five for the commissioner.
Yes.
The clerk is now what?
One three three, four eight nine.
Okay, treasure.
One, seven five, six eight seven.
Okay, county attorney?
I just left it alone, but with what the Budget Committee said, because they.
That's four seven seven, one six four.
That's right.
Yep.
Four seven seven, one six four, okay.
County counselor?
I left it where the Budget Committee put it.
Seventy-five?
Seventy-five.
Register of deeds?
Rod?
Uh, one one four, eight eight nine, 'cause that was that one point four.
One one four, eight eight nine, okay.
And then, the sheriff, it must have moved to a different fund or something.
Sheriff, well, he's not in the general fund.
Custodial, they didn't, they were humble, they didn't ask for anything, one fifty-two, two ninety-nine last year, that's what they.
Okay.
Asked for this year, one fifty-two, two ninety-nine.
Courthouse general?
Courthouse general, that, I'm, I'm not touching, it's everything, um, the insurance and everything.
Okay.
And so, five eight four, oh one nine, because if there were insurance cre, increases, it has to be in there. The coroner, fifty thousand, leaving it alone, because it is what it is, and, um, district court, he got a ten thousand dollar increase, but nobody knows why, but I watched him, he sat here pretty humble, and only asked for what he needed, I believe.
Well, and he hadn't asked for anything for a long time, and I'm not sure, it wasn't for me to speak with.
So we're gonna go three forty-nine?
Three, four nine, six five oh, yeah, and then you got emergency, uh, preparedness, and Brian did too, he, yep, he just asked for what he was, six four, five seven nine.
And that's a reduction.
Hmm, that's what it was in twenty-five, it says.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, what I'm saying here, that was the same amount, yes, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Two forty-four.
And then IT, we went from two ninety-four, one twenty-seven last year to two fifty this year.
And then dispatch, two forty?
Two forty, that's right, uh, juvenile detention, one thirty-five, and let's just cross our fingers and hope it don't go up.
Okay.
Health board appropriations.
Ninety-two.
Back to ninety, seven fifty.
Ninety?
Yeah, ninety, seven fifty, back to last year, that's Sam's proposal.
Hang on a second, ninety, seven fifty, okay.
Okay.
And then the fair, five thousand, he's, Sam's proposal is to leave the things cut that they cut, five thousand for the fair, twenty-four, three hundred for elderly, twenty-five thousand for.
Conservation.
Conservation, yeah.
So we'll get on all three, and then?
Yeah, the computer reserve, it got depleted, the, zero, 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 now we're down to.
Jury trial.
Do we wanna leave a jury trial, or do we wanna move that to zero, and then move that number over to the, um?
I say, leave it alone.
Leave it alone, and then when we go into January, we'll start cleaning up some of these funds, and, and, there are some other funds we can move into general fund and make all that a lot easier.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay.
It's gonna make it a lot, a lot easier than I'm saying it would.
Okay, so, HR seventy-one, six hundred?
Yep.
Yep.
And cash reserve is one twenty-eight, seven hundred, that's the part that's gonna change.
Should go up, because we just took some other out.
Yeah, well.
Well, we added some other two, so we just need to add these line item up and see the difference, and then.
You sure you keep point two right on, Mike, so I think you have it great.
It would go into the cash reserve.
So what about, uh, okay, so we had human resources, that's seventy-one, six, is that right?
Yes, sir, seventy thousand, six hundred.
And so we're gonna, we're gonna put a line through, um, let's just put a, let's just utilize a couple of these lines, this transfer to computer equipment, let's put a line through that, and put finance on it.
So what, what do you mean, put a line to it?
Well, it's not happening anymore.
You mean, cross it out?
Yeah.
Cross it out.
And then write finance in its place, and let's put twenty-five thousand for finance.
Wait, for transfer computer equipment reserve?
Well, we're gonna change that to.
Just using its whole.
Just using the spot.
Which one are you crossing out?
Uh, transfer to computer equipment reserve.
Okay, so cross that out, and just put finance in its place.
Yes.
And you want how much in it?
Twenty-five thousand. Twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
And then Jennifer's, uh, position, Jennifer, is it okay if I talk about your position, you're sitting here, Jennifer's position that we're funding right now, I want to leave in there, and, and so.
We need to add it.
We're, we're doing it this year, it's just, it wasn't in last year's budget, yeah, okay.
So where do you wanna cross out?
Transfer EMO?
Just the next one down, transfer, yeah, transfer to law.
So what do you want to put in that?
And, um, well, we, we called it a floater, but we can, we can give it a more, a better.
Commissioner or assistant?
Yeah, commission assistant, she helped everybody though.
Why don't you just make an administrative assistant?
Administrative assistant. Admin assist?
Yeah.
Let me figure it out.
Make it good, no way I can resign and put in for that.
For administrative assistant?
I'm just messing, bro.
It'd be part-time, Jennifer's full-time, but I'd rather it be part-time, let's just budget thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five?
Yeah. Okay. So that.
And then I also have to go over to employee benefits, too.
No, because I budgeted part-time.
Oh, part-time, that's right.
Yeah, so you wouldn't have to do that.
Things to be really careful of.
Yeah.
Makes a big difference in your salary.
It sure does.
Alright, now can you give that list to, or did you add up all, all the dollars?
No, but I'll do that.
I'm gonna tell you to do that, but okay.
That'll change your sub to.
I think we need to do a resolution.
Cash reserve would be.
About, about commissioners meeting. From here on out, there needs to be a bottle of Blanton here.
Bottle of what?
A bottle of Blanton bourbon.
That's what we need, some drunken commissioners trying to pass through.
I can tell you that, history is something, ask me someday, okay?
I'm just messing.
Cause you're a calculator that makes that, that register aid.
Have the, have the commission meeting at a bar.
You can, or you can just do that slide on there. I didn't know if it plugged in.
I was gonna recommend that, but anyone hurt your feelings.
I'd really like.
Cause make sure.
The speaker oughta really like that.
Make sure when you finally get that little ticker, that ticket, right, you take commi- you tell commissioner.
Were you watching it on TV and decide to come in?
Official number, not this other stuff.
Welcome.
It's just about over, though.
I wish you would've brought popcorn.
Feels like a, a weird work session, but it's actually a meeting, because we wanted to be able to make a motion about the budget, so.
You've got nine more minutes before that football game starts.
Oh my gosh.
Court's got tigers.
Oh. Are they here tonight?
No, they're in Lewisburg.
Lewisburg. Is it on TV?
It'll be on YouTube.
YouTube, okay.
I'm assuming DuckBait usually always has, if not, the radio station will have it on there.
Yeah. I keep forgetting this is Friday, cause it seems like a Monday right now.
It's alright.
A very, very bad Monday.
It's a good Monday, you know why?
Cause I'm standing.
That's right, you're six feet above ground, it's a great Monday.
Yep. Be greater if I was out there catching catfish right now.
Why are you catching catfish at this time of year?
Throw your pole out in the water.
Oh, so it doesn't matter where you go?
Dynamite. Actually, it is pretty warm, still. We used to fish all year long, it didn't matter.
Just how patient you are.
I remember when I was a kid, and my dad and his friends would go out, and they'd sit out there at the lake, and they'd cast out. I'd fish up until dark, and then I'd get tired of it, well, they weren't going home, so. They just, we'd build a fire, and I'd go to sleep by the fire. They'd sit there drinking coffee.
Those are the good old days, I mean, really.
And that was, you know, they put the little bell on their, on their rods.
Yes.
I usually, I would sit in my lawn chair, and angle the pole under the, so that my foot was up against it, so I'd fish bait, hit my foot.
I usually would, by that time, I'd already be real dead, and just sitting here, you know, wishing I was at home. Cause they'd stay out all night, you know, when you're nine, ten years old, you know.
You need to change fish.
Yeah.
I fished all night.
What'd you have for county council?
Well, when I got older, that's what me and my brothers did, I mean, we'd go out all night, so, we carry on the tradition, that's for sure.
Was that an increase or decrease, Myla?
So what was the total?
It was a small increase, thirty-two, twenty-two, oh one one.
Thirty-two, forty-two?
Uh-huh.
Oh one one?
Yep. I don't know how that was, just that small of an increase, so, it should've been more than that.
What'd she say, thirty-two, forty-two, oh oh one?
Three million, two hundred, forty-two thousand, eleven dollars.
Three thou- or, two forty-two, right?
It should've been more than that.
Three two, four two, zero, one one.
Three two, four two, zero.
One one.
Okay.
So that's on.
Now, is that all of it? I wanna just be sure I got this to give to Greg correctly.
So then, that's just the general.
Right, that's just the general part, and then.
So.
Now we gotta go to, what, thirty-one, page thirty-one?
No, you got the appraiser. Seven. Page seven. I mean, you gotta start with the appraiser, right?
Right.
That's the first one up.
You got the clerk, treasurer, attorney, counselor, registered deeds, sheriff.
Oh, you're on the, uh.
Six B.
Yeah, doing the, uh, commodities and stuff?
Mm-hmm.
See, I think most of all, these are, you're gonna find out it was the very same. Cause as I look at this appraiser, twenty twenty-five was two fifty-one, or two forty-one, and this what this one here shows.
I got twenty twenty-five, it's right here, if you wanted to, wanted to compare.
See, I don't know where some of these figures, okay, I know where that one came from.
So we go with the, what the heck is it, county appraiser?
An election, I understand, where these all came from, okay.
Two hundred and fifty-one thousand.
For their appraiser?
Mm-hmm, it was two.
It was, went from two forty-one to two fifty-one.
He went up ten grand.
And that was the one we tried to cut, and he was going to, and they told, and they gave him a specifically really good reason on why to leave that ten thousand dollars in there, and that, cause Greg text us on that one.
Okay, so we're keeping him at two fifty-one?
What was he, what was he last year?
Two forty-one.
Really?
Yeah, page seven.
I know, I'm looking at twenty twenty-five's budget, it doesn't say two forty-one.
Okay, but if you look at the line above that, it says, total expenditures, two forty-one.
No, I mean, I'm looking at the workbook from last year on twenty twenty-five.
No, it changed from the workbook.
So we're gonna keep him at two fifty-one commissioners?
What page are you at?
Page seven.
Page seven. Two fifty-one.
Give me just a moment. We can find out where the change was.
Is that?
If you look at is.
The ten thousand was commodities.
Okay, see, we cut it down to two forty-one, and then when Greg went and talked to everyone that we asked, we reduced their budgets, and Matt said he had to have that ten thousand dollars, because that's for like the travel, when they go out and the fuel with the vehicle they use, when they have to go inspect stuff and et cetera. So that's why we put it back in there, and so it's two fifty-one.
I have a question, cause he has an extra fund, he has that NRP fund, and so, if we can take whatever he needs out of that NRP fund, instead of using the ad valorem tax, I would rather do that.
Well, I think that, I think that he looked at, I mean, I think Greg looked at that.
Okay, alright.
Well, I, I'll get back over here just a second.
That, that man is very conservative.
Okay.
Who, Greg or Matt?
Matt.
Matt. I don't see.
For some reason, your whole budget committee was pretty conservative, I mean, we all were conservatives that got put on that budget committee, and that went right along with it. We didn't have anybody that we didn't feel like.
Okay, so his commodities last year was what?
Ten.
Ten thousand.
His commodities this year is thirteen, five, one, five.
Yeah, thirteen.
And contractual services were twenty-five and went to thirty-one.
Went up six.
So.
Six up six, sixty-four, eighty-five. So, I mean, yeah, but you don't know what his contractual services are, so, I mean, the price could've went up.
Well, and I'm, and we're talking about appraiser, I'm sure that's probably when he has to hire someone to do those maps or those plowing, bodying.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, the price of that, the cost of that probably went up, that's why.
It's gonna go up, see, I think that's why he was thinking, he was gonna, he wanted to take a chance.
So commodities, I mean, we don't know how I'll break down on that, cause I was working on, on a deal there, working on, uh, yeah, just because of our, uh, R and R hearing, and the people that spoke, I was looking at reducing commodities all, all the way across the board.
Well, see, I think that, what's your idea on the commodity thing, is a really good idea, you, Jennifer, I'm volunteering, Jennifer, or somebody like that in the courthouse, that run, all that runs through them.
Yeah, well, as I say, I, I was looking at, you know, a twenty-five percent cut on everybody's commodities, uh.
Well, I think.
And that would save us almost, I mean, the way I had it, the way I had it figured out, but I was using other, you know, some of these other numbers, but I, I didn't get it off of your guys', but it, it, it still was, uh, about a three mil drop.
Well.
You're gonna need, you're gonna need a, a counting system for commodities, you're gonna have to start like tracking.
Right, right.
Because none of these people have it.
No, no, I mean.
And once you have your plans and.
Just look at your, your, your APs from.
Yes.
From, from.
I went back.
Week to week, month to month.
After you mentioned that, that night at the meeting, I went back home and looked, cause we had a lot of information that we requested extra when we started our budget meeting.
Right.
And there's some of my detail in there, and, and you've got a really good idea, that you, someone is the central supply office per se, or whatever, and, and then they can charge everybody's budget accordingly to whatever they order they come in, but you can save quite a bit of money.
Yeah.
By doing that. All paper clips at one time are buying the paper for, you don't want separate things like that.
Back to this, are we good with the two fifty-one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause it, that was, and honestly, what I'm looking at is that, on that one.
Okay, because.
It said that they proposed it to be two fifty-one this year, they budgeted two forty-one, but they think they're gonna spend two fifty-one, is that what that means, Jennifer?
That's what that looks like to me.
And so that's why you're doing two fifty-one next year, is because you're not gonna get by with spending less than that this year.
That's right, that's correct.
Well, and he increased those two.
Okay, well, just, I'm verifying, as you guys are doing your thing, the. There was a change on Susan's budget for that one, cause it went, for Susan's budget was two fifty, not two fifty-one, I'm just verifying as we go, cause the next one.
I threw mine over there.
Well, I know, I know. On the next one, it's going to be, uh, elections, and it matches with what she proposes, is one ten.
Eight sixty-four.
And we went five, to five districts, and there's a lot.
So we're good with that?
Lot for that, lot for that to, to have, uh, went up, yeah, there's a lot of reasons why it would go up, so.
Um, employee benefits is two million, eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Employee benefits here is, she cut it down to two million, seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
And see, I don't know where that came from, cause we left it at two eight twenty, eight sixteen.
Yeah, and that's what I.
Two what?
Two million, eight hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and sixteen.
So you left it according to this?
Yes.
Yeah.
What do you guys say?
Probably better leave it alone, cause we don't know what it's gonna do.
Right.
And we have, based in there, an estimated eight percent increase in your premium.
Right.
But you never know how many employees you're gonna have either, see, that makes a big difference.
Right. Mental health?
Mental health.
Is zero.
Yep.
Zero, yes.
To Micah.
Okay, zero. Intellectual disabilities?
That wouldn't happen.
Fifty-five thousand.
You just left that alone?
Oh, you left that one alone, okay.
Um, law enforcement?
That's a hundred thousand dollar increase, um.
Two million, three hundred thousand, three forty-seven.
Yeah, it looks like it's like a ninety-six thousand dollar increase.
Say that again, Carolyn, please.
Two million, three hundred thousand, three forty-seven, two, three, zero, zero, three.
Okay, on, on Susan's budget, it's three million, uh, two million, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, twenty-two dollars.
Well, that's more than what the budget committee did.
Right.
Yeah, well, and, and what I'm seeing here on, on, on what the, the budget committee, and I'm, I'm assuming that you had a conversation with Bill on that.
Yes.
Uh, cause his capital outlay dropped, went, went into a negative number, so.
Well, and then it's supposed, then, and if you remember that night of the meeting, uh, we talked about the equipment and the vehicles and et cetera, and so to keep the mill every down, their sales tax money would be transferred over there for him, and that.
Got it, yeah, so, yeah.
To use for operations, that all qualified under the operations.
I wanna say that, that, that I wouldn't, I wouldn't take the BA, the BAC's recommendation and keep it there, because you guys worked real hard with him.
And I know Susan had previously mentioned that she ran actuals to see, because wages has, have gone up, raises have been given, and she mentioned that, um, corrections, wages weren't budgeted high enough, and she just texted me, so let's see what.
Okay, so that's why it went up?
I'm sure that's probably true.
And what was her, her numbers again, Sam?
Her number was two, two million, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, twenty-two dollars.
Yeah, it went up twenty-six thousand.
So we wanna, we wanna, we wanna jump that up?
Do we do?
Yeah.
Two million, three twenty-six, what?
Two, two, three, two, six, zero, two, two.
Yeah, because we wanna, we wanna be able to account for, for the increase to corrections, to not be short.
He's short one employee also.
Okay.
Are, Carolyn, were there only raises that were al- already given in here, or are there future projected raises?
We didn't project any raises whatsoever.
So you're just keeping them at function?
We only had one person mention they wanted to give a raise, and that was Public Works, and we took that out.
Okay.
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 Remember anybody else?
Well, he did, he, he, he's projecting raises on his proposal.
Well, they may have them in there somewhere, but I mean, when he talked about, well.
I think he already gave them, Sam, in this budget, and he's.
The budget went up accordingly.
Not filling a position this year.
They gave, they gave them raises earlier in the year.
I think you're exactly right, David, because we didn't, I mean, we didn't put money in there for raises, period.
Yeah, so this is just.
Now, that doesn't mean someone may not.
Because it's re- you know, it has to become reoccurring now, so.
Yeah, someone may not come in and ask you for raises, and they're gonna say, I've got budget room to do it, but.
Right.
The, the raises equate to one hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars from twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
That's right.
That's a lot of money in raises.
There was a hundred thousand dollar transfer made.
Yeah, that's what, I mean, he was able, they were able to find that money.
He did dump, he did dump his capital outlay.
Well, we wouldn't have to raise the budget if they found that money this year, they didn't find the money this year.
Well, that, that's how he got raised?
He was a man down, and he gave raises with his position.
Okay, well, I mean.
So he, he dumped his capital outlay for the sheriff's department of one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-two.
Because he's gonna purchase vehicles through the sales tax.
We hope so.
We hope, yeah.
So, going back to it, he's pulling, he's on his budget, he's pulling zero, that, that's where it's at, zero. So he's pulling, this is where I was looking, it's like, in my notes said that we pulled ninety-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars out of the, um, jail county sales tax to add to this, this line here, we could drop our mill. And the note I had was fifty-eight point five one nine. Now, we'd have to re-figure all that out based on everything here, but that's, that's where that part of that figuring came out to be.
And you gotta remember, this page does not include the jail, this is public.
Well, it's those corrections on there.
Yeah, page twelve.
Down at the bottom, you got wages, contractual commodities, capital outlay, which they have no capital outlay.
Right.
And they took a cut in commodities.
Where's his sales tax money?
There is none, he didn't put none in there.
That's another, that's another page.
He doesn't do that, but that's what I'm saying, where does she have that at?
She didn't, that was something that was on my notes.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay.
Yeah, that's my notes.
Gotcha, okay, I understand.
Okay, so are we gonna leave it at two million, three twenty-six?
No, my question is, do we want to add money from this, the county jail's tax? Cause there's two million dollars in there, and his budget right now is two point three million dollars. That's coming from ad valorem, so what I'm saying is, if you pull some money from the county, the jail county sales tax, put it in here, that drops that.
Okay, but if you do that, you're reducing the amount that, there's other things she uses that county sales tax for too.
The only thing, and correct me if I'm wrong, cause we, you guys read the, 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 um, statutes, the only thing we can spend that money on is county courthouse, the jail, and, and the sheriff's facility, that's the only thing you spend that money on.
But the courthouse covers a lot of area, it covers your general.
I thought it said county facilities.
County, no, it said county courthouse.
But there's a bond you gotta pay.
Right, that's the one, that's the one part that I don't, I don't have that part of the court, cause I'm, I did ask the question, how much are we paying in bond payments?
We're paying the minimum, because it's cheap money right now.
So what's minimum?
Very cheap money, and that's why.
She said you can only get by with that for one year, and then we're gonna be eating into the principal.
That's right, right.
Okay, so define that for you.
I wasn't invited to this party, so.
Well, but you're injecting, so I'm asking.
Well, you, you were not stating the obvious, which, what the jail's sales tax is for, is to pay back the bond.
I understand that.
But it can also use for operation of the courthouse.
But excess funds, not principal.
So here it says right here, it says. The Board of Commissioners Bourbon County submit question of imposing countywide retail sales tax at a rate of one percent in increments of point zero five. Pledge and revenue received therefore from, for the purpose of financing the cost of constructing, furnishing, operating a courthouse, law enforcement center. Or jail facility improvement to the electors and an election called and held thereon. So what it's saying here is. Constructing, furnishing, and operating a courthouse, law enforcement center, or jail facility improvements.
At the time that that was done, the court, the jail facilities and was part of this courthouse. And so that allowed her to use money for courthouse also. And so that's what they've been doing, part of the money. And as they've reduced his mill levy, they've increased his sales tax, but not as much accordingly.
So you know what, do you know what the bond payment is, Jennifer?
It's four hundred and fifty four thousand seven hundred and eight dollars next year.
Yeah, okay, so.
It's not in here.
Four hundred?
Probably.
It's page four, so yes, four hundred and fifty four thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars.
That's next year.
Yes, that's for next year for the.
And how much is in the account right now?
Two million.
I don't know that for sure, but there's also.
This should be all your debt.
Next year, you have jail bond or jail pod and equipment that's gonna be paid. And then I'm not a hundred percent sure which, if the in-car cameras and the vehicles come out of sales tax. But there are sheriff's vehicles, um, so we need to double check that to see where, what funds are being paid out of.
I think they come out of sales.
That's what I was thinking, but I'm not.
That's what we were talking about, so, so we need to add that on there where it says transfer from jail's county sales tax.
How much?
I don't know.
On your budget.
We gotta make that bond payment.
Pages that you guys look at if you, you don't have to tonight, it's world, except, but on page four and five is all of your debt that's obligated that you have to make payments on every year.
What pages are that?
Page four and five.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And it'll show you how much, it'll show you how much is due, how much you need to pay and when you have it paid off. That was always great. Just start dropping them off. You don't have your general obligation bonds, your refinancing, vehicles. Elevator, well, the elevator's been paid off, rock crusher, et cetera.
Thank you, Carolyn.
You're welcome.
We should have this brief, debriefing. This debriefing helps a lot. So thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm gonna have to find that model that David was talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So when it says payment due, is that payment due in a lump sum or can they pay it in a monthly?
No, it's that, how much is, I'm, I'm assuming if it's the same format.
It says right there.
Shows how much the check I was writing for.
Date due.
Yeah, like payments due in twenty twenty five of, okay, those amounts in that column, that's how much you write the check for each one of those payments.
Right, so it just says payment due in twenty twenty six, so like the rock crusher's a hundred seventeen thousand.
Oh, I thought you were looking at the.
So some of those are split up into, um, like by annual payments, some of like the vehicles get paid monthly, some of them are.
Yeah, some of them you'll pay all at once, but that's the total for the year.
Okay.
And see, and also the other thing I think is most important on here for you all, as you're looking at things, is the date of retirement. If you notice that landfill retirement is March first of twenty twenty six.
Yeah. It's due.
You've got some of this reason.
So we, we, we have a principle on it.
Right, well, and David, look at your rock crusher, see, you get it, you pay, let's see when it expires. Well, that's a twenty.
Looks like on the jail though, I mean, on the landfill, we will pay, we, we could.
You're gonna have several of these that's coming off in the next couple of years.
Yeah.
These payments that's coming, you're gonna have several of these coming off.
On, um, Road and Bridge. Did they build in raises or did they already give raises also like?
They, there's, we didn't build in any raises.
Are we finishing, are we done on sheriffs right now?
Wages for twenty twenty five.
Cause we haven't decided how much to pull money out of the, I'm sorry, Commissioner Milburn.
Oh, it's okay.
We have not decided on how much to pull out of the jail, county jail tax.
I think that's gonna be something Susan's gonna have to do once you establish the mill levy. That's gonna make the difference. She's, I mean, and it has nothing to do with she, her making the decision, it's how much money that's needed.
Right.
Once you establish the mill levy.
Need somebody with that computer in here that to change the numbers to tell us what, you know.
But, but that's, I mean, that's gonna be the deal, and I mean, you know, you just.
Okay.
Once you get these figures, you get them to us and we'll take a look at it, because I mean, do you, what do you want the mill levy to be?
We want it to be not more than last year.
Okay, well, it's not right now, but we got two here that's less than last year right now.
Yeah.
So if, if we have two mi-, two million dollars in the coffer and we have a bond payment of roughly.
Four thirty five.
Four fifty four, half a mil. Okay, so that leaves you a mil and a half. I say. Throw the sheriff a hundred thousand dollars. And what I'm getting is, throw, throw the sheriff a hundred thousand dollars out of that and that's a starting point.
How much comes into it every year?
Well, last year they put two fifty in it. Yeah, I mean, and transferred over two fifty.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, how much comes in?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't. And that's, that's part of the budget where I wish I was smarter and I wish I had the information, cause I don't have that.
But you know, some of that stuff doesn't show you here, and so this is why you need these forms that she was talking about, this financial. We always had a financial report that came out every month and quarterly and updated, and it showed your total revenue from sale tax for the year.
Have you, have you generated that type of data sheet for commissioners in the past?
We just got a report. So Selena sent out the reports.
I'm sure you have, I'm sure she.
And but yes, we've sent them out.
Because we had, we had that report when we did the budgets, we had.
We had two.
We had legal spreadsheets that had all the expenditures and all the revenues on it for four years, three years, something like that. So I know it's available.
It's available.
Yeah, and it shows where the different places it came from and everything.
There's a lot of these that were, had twenty twenty five budgets for wages and the twenty twenty six budgets are all up by a lot of money on wages. Yet they say they haven't.
Like which one?
Well, Road and Bridge is one, EMS is another one, they all have.
EMS was not, okay, EMS was a reason. How much is it at?
About fifty thousand dollars.
So we're, we're. Where are we at on sheriffs? Let's, let's, let's put this thing and get going.
I, I recommended a hundred thousand dollars out of.
What do you think? Commissioner Milburn. Hundred thousand from the. Sales tax to the sheriff.
Oh, yeah.
Now, would we reduce the total?
No, you would put i- in your reserves is what he's saying.
He's saying instead of using tax money, to use sales tax money instead of this mill levy, right? Isn't that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and that's the instructions when we give this information to Susan. I'll help you, Jennifer.
Okay.
We'll get, anyway.
We'll get with Mike's list and my list.
Cause that, Greg doesn't need to know that information, but Susan does need to know that information. Cause that makes a big difference.
So we're gonna put a hundred K, K on the transfer?
That's what I'm recommending. You guys good with that?
He's one hundred thousand.
More than what she's already got in there. She's already got some in there.
Well, I mean, on the sheet here, it says zero.
Zero. On page twelve?
Page twelve.
Oh, yeah, but what I'm saying is she's, yeah, but she's using it to pay the, the make. Payment on the vehicles that aren't even budgeted on here.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, gotta be sure you.
So we don't need to put nothing on, on page twelve?
Well, you do in a sense, I mean, what I'm saying, you don't wanna spend the money to reduce this. If it takes all of it to pay, make that payment on the vehicles.
Right.
Makes sense?
Okay. So then we, we increase it by that.
The, the payment on the vehicles.
As far as his, his total expenditures. Yeah, then we can vote to.
Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't change it.
Just leave it like two, three, two, two million three twenty six zero twenty two.
Alright, sir.
Leave it like that. Okay, so noxious weeds.
Yes, thank you, Jennifer.
It went up. Two eighteen.
Oof, I think that's not gonna break the bank, is it?
Two thousand from last year.
She has a two sixteen on hers.
It was two sixteen last year, so if you're going flat.
Which one is that?
And again, that one, that one's in wages, it, the, to that, two thousand dollars is in wages. And everybody's saying that there's not wages built in, but it looks like there is because twenty twenty five was forty thousand and this is two thousand. So I understand what you're saying, but that's not what I'm seeing.
Well, what I'm saying is, I don't know how she broke it down. What I'm saying is, no one came into us and said we want money for raises. I remember that Public Works, Josh was the one that did Public Works.
Very.
And he came through and he said, when we come to the one point four percent, he said, we don't need that, cause he said, they wanted ra- raise. And I would just hold everything the same. I mean, that was our conversation. Now, that's the Burk, Budget Committee.
Well, if we're holding it the same, then it's gonna go back to two sixteen.
Well. What do we have on ours?
Two eighteen.
Okay, that's two, okay, that two thousand must be for some other reason.
It says wages.
Wages, the increase in wages, cause wages went from forty to forty two.
Yeah, we didn't. We didn't mark anything line item. We did total.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So I'd say whatever, and this was which one?
For noxious weeds.
Do you see noxious weeds on there?
No.
I don't think we did anything with noxious weeds. We must have left it the same.
So that'll go to two sixteen.
Cause we don't have it on this sheet. This is, this is Greg's sheet, the ones that he changed. Otherwise, we left them.
So we're good on the, I mean, I'm sorry, I had some, we're on the noxious weeds or we went on by?
Uh, two sixteen's good.
Keeping it or dropping it?
Yeah, we're dropping it to sixteen.
So we're taking the two thousand off his salary?
Yes, sir. The next one's Road and Bridge. That's a big dump.
Okay, yeah, that's.
And that one's in wages as well.
Fourteen. Okay, so where are we at on that? Wages.
I'm guessing this is raises that were already given.
Nah, I don't know.
Seventy six thousand dollar increase.
You're saying yes, there, Mister Walker?
The, the cost between the, the, the twenty twenty five versus the twenty twenty six budget, there's an increase of seventy six thousand two hundred seventy four dollars.
Yeah.
And that's where.
Well, that's another one that you can just make stay the same.
Okay, uh, Mister Walker has a.
This is what I understand, is that the Public Works, they give raises, how they did that, and they cut personnel. First bear bone at thirty eight now, that's how they gave their people raises.
Okay, what I'm saying is though.
Okay, thank you.
Based on what she's, what she's, when Susan's did this, she's gone through and looked at their payroll. I mean, you could, you could, for wages and things like that, you can, you can't go by what was the previous year, cause there's too much. You don't know if someone got a raise in June, someone got a raise in May or whatever. She's went and looked at the last payroll. And based the estimate for wages on what they're getting paid as of today.
And this is what you guys proposed.
But this is what she gave us.
And that's what she gave?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
What is this one?
So that would have been the same on noxious weed?
See, we, well, see, we gave her, we gave her, we gave her the total and then she actually spread it out. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I borrow your count?
Yep.
Just throw. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So.
Any of those questions like that, just for the big question marked by, but what you'd like to have, or maybe it's okay to leave it the same, whichever, and we'll ask Greg. Cause he's the one that can answer those questions.
Okay.
Okay, so on Road and Bridge.
Is that not true? Is that not true?
Only, only half of that increases wages.
I know. I know.
Yeah, cause they, they dropped in a whole bunch, they dropped in covert sales, they dropped in a bunch of stuff, but they raised in certain things like. Uh, Elm Creek fee is a five thousand dollar increase. Um, they dropped in transfer from Road and Bridge Tax Fund, they dropped that by sixty three thousand four hundred seventy five.
And see, those are the budgets that was submitted by those people to us.
They didn't do anything for miscellaneous at all, that, uh, in, in twenty four, they had twenty thousand dollars in that.
Well, if we're going, if we're doing what you said, uh, we're just gonna drop them back down.
Okay.
Unless it's like a contractual that we can't, and so then you would take it to two ninety seven.
Let me, let me do one more ciphering here, gazetas, and then I will let you know what this is. Is that right, one, four, zero, there's two, two sixes, two threes, alright.
Three, two, nine, seven, nine, three, one, five.
Now, which one are you on?
So there is an increase of six.
Work, page fourteen.
So everything that is, it is mostly wages, because I said initially, there's a seventy, seventy something thousand dollar increase between last year's budget and this year. Sixty six thousand nine hundred eighty three dollars is in wages.
So you take that sixty six off and it goes to two million nine hundred seventy nine thousand three hundred fifteen for that.
But you'll wanna look at Elm Creek in two thousand twenty five, that's one of the things, they've, they've kind of moved different things around.
Exactly right.
Um, so they used to budget.
Wages for that, that's one guy, plus room and board.
And Elm Creek is gonna come up. We're gonna talk about Elm Creek.
Oh, yeah. We're gonna fight about Elm Creek.
So are their wages up, up somewhere else?
So they've moved the wages from, just like Special Bridge.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, the Elm Creek, they've moved those wages into Road and Bridge.
That's what I'm saying, they're, they're just maybe put in a different place.
Okay, so did, did, did the bottom line increase or decrease?
I understand what you're saying, Jennifer.
Commodities went up.
But it looks like they moved them in twenty twenty five, so it would have still been included in the twenty twenty five wages here. So it wa- it was moved a year ago, so it still stands to reason that they are included in that number.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, whatever they've got here, I think you're gonna, we really need to leave that it may be designated by a different name or in a different fund than it was before. Cause when you get over here on this Road and Bridge, you're gonna find out that, that whole thing is sales tax money. Yeah, Road and Bridge, that whole thing is sales tax money.
She dropped Road and Bridge, she dropped Road and Bridge at two point seven seven one.
And see, there, it shows.
So it's less than, she, she dropped it less than twenty fi- twenty twenty five.
Okay, but what I'm saying, that, when you look at page twenty, which is Road and Bridge, it's gonna, you're gonna show that revenue up there and that's all sales tax money that's coming in on that one.
Page twenty.
To fund that budget. And it almost zeros out every year.
Right, that is the sales tax.
Yes, yeah.
Portion of it.
Yes, that is what that, that's outlet, that's sales tax, yes.
That's, uh, yeah, that's used, uh, on the hard road surfaces.
Yes, yes. And I'm sure that.
And they don't put, they don't factor wages in here on.
No, well, no, well.
Cause it's moved over there on the other page.
Yeah, they've moved all those to Road and Bridge.
So that's, that's why I'm saying.
So that, when I, when you said earlier about freezing, uh, and then they said, well, you can't freeze. Hard roads this year because it has cut out the wages. Well, wages were already over there.
And when, see, this is why, and probably for you to get a true look at Public Works. Go ahead and put off, I think there's five different areas that fall underneath that, put them all together and then look at the grand total over here.
Right.
And that's gonna really be what it is, but, uh, they do move that stuff around.
Yeah, that makes it confusing, makes it hard to track and hard to budget for next year.
I would have liked the idea of, of freezing for a year, because then you're not trying to project, you're using money from the previous year.
That's right.
Yes, I like that too.
I agree with you.
I like that too.
Say that again.
By freezing, like, hard road services for one year, instead of working off projections of what you're going to collect. You're working off what you actually collected.
Yeah, and that's what you're gonna do.
Because you go one year behind.
That's right, and there's nothing wrong with that.
Yeah. So then you're, you're, when you budget the roads for like twenty twenty seven, you're using twenty twenty six money.
Right.
And then so on, and so on, and so on.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, that also gives you a chance to take your, your Public Works personnel and say, okay, let's, let's work on. Other areas of the county, like ditches or gravel roads and stuff like that, that people are really up in arms about on some, some area. Right, yeah, when we start doing the strategic planning and stuff, yeah, and for our new director, whoever that might be.
So important, that five year plan.
I'll fight you for that too.
What? You wanna fight?
Just, let's just throw it out.
He slid back, he's like, I'm out.
Um, so we're just gonna, what are we gonna do for, we're gonna, okay.
Okay, there's some, two different numbers that popped up. Are we at the two million eight sixty four, two ninety eight? We leaving it at that?
What, what does the committee have at?
That's what, that's what's written in here right now.
That's EMS, I'm sorry, committee has it for two, yeah, two point eight million dollars.
I'm sure that's correct. Okay, you know what I'm saying, because we talked about that a lot.
Well, my, my next.
Even if they moved them from one to another, if they got the budget they got last year, why wouldn't it work? Well, you.
And we're less people.
I'm just asking.
Or did they fill all the positions now?
They're down, they're, they're at thirty five.
They're thirty five.
Their, their costs went up.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, fuel went up, gravel went up, well, making the gravel went up.
Hopefully, fuel prices are gonna go down, we don't know that yet, but we hope they do.
So my question is, like, I have three numbers I'm looking at. I have two million eight hundred sixty four and some change. That's what the committee proposed. Last year's budget was two point seven eight eight million, okay? Susan's number is two point seven seven one. So her number is actually less than last year's budget.
Well, I think that we should go a little more than last year's budget and go two seven nine seven three fifteen. That, that gives them the additional contractual, because something changed there, so.
So say that again.
Take out the, the increase in wages.
Uh, two, seven, nine, seven, three, one, five.
Like Jennifer says, we're gonna have to have some money for, is it Elm Creek? Is that what it's called?
Yes.
Okay. Because we gotta do some stuff, we gotta do some work out there. I mean, I know people volunteer.
Well, seeing Elm Creek, um, um, we don't see it in there, but.
Is that the Hyatt?
We, we need to, we need to factor in, uh, a capital outlay on, on that, because we got buildings that are just got new roofs and. But the buildings themselves.
High bill.
No, yeah, down, yeah, and they got new, new windows, new roofs, but they need tuck point on their buildings. And, or we're gonna, we're gonna have rubble with new windows and new roofs.
It's true.
You know, um, remember yesterday, somebody was talking about Fort Scott Community College? How they have a construction program.
The windows got put in by the high school construction.
I saw that, but I was out there with the tuck point.
Mason program.
We don't have a tuck pointing class, we have a masonry class, but it.
Well, that's part of it.
Well, and I had, yeah, and I had people come forward that, that, that would do volunteer for tuck pointing. But they also work for the company that would also bid for it. You know, and if they, you know, if they start it, and then they got a job and they go out of town, then you got a half, half completed job. That's why it's best to contract it out and let it, let it get done, and then move forward, because. You know, we don't want them buildings to fall in, and, and, I mean, they're not in that bad a shape, but, I mean, I'm over exaggerating a little bit.
For me, it's, it wasn't about the park itself, but when I say Elm Creek, it's not about the park.
I know what you're talking about.
It's about the, the overburden, and are we gonna do anything with that, with that piece of property and turn it into a quarry?
That's a future discussion.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we, we're settling on.
I mean, it's already been put in, approved.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
So we just need to figure out if that's what we, we want them to move or not. Um, two point seven nine million dollars is what you agreed?
Yeah, two, seven, nine, seven, three, fifteen. Is that what you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, so EMS is.
Let's hope that it don't bite us.
EMS is one.
Their wages went up a lot.
Well, pocket fees on their wages is the overtime, and let me explain why that happens.
Okay.
There is a question there, if one of their employees is on vacation, they have to be replaced. Where, if you've got a sheriff department that has somebody on vacation, sometimes somebody else can cover, or you've got somebody at landfill on vacation, somebody else can help cover. But you've got to have a body in that EMS seat when that other guy are.
But they had to have a body in that seat last year too. I mean, they've been functioning on this for a whole year, so why is it so much more this year than last year?
And that's the reason, because they asked the fact, they were the ones that came to you all and asked, and I don't know whether you guys considered it or not. But they asked the fact, do they have to take their vacation? If not, they'd stay at work, and then you don't have to hire somebody from the outside to come in to replace them. But can they get paid for it?
Yeah.
Right.
I don't think they have the money to pay them for it.
Well, you, you pay less money, you pay less, you gotta pay in regards. You, you pay less money in wages, because you wouldn't be hiring somebody from the outside to come in to replace them. You, when they're on vacation, they're getting their regular wage, and you're paying somebody else the regular wage.
You're gonna still pay, pay you.
Okay, but if you do that for one department, I mean, you'd have to talk about that and talk to your human resource guy and talk to your lawyer about it. Because you don't wanna do that everywhere.
I think, leave it alone, they look, look here, they went from a hundred and ninety thousand on commodities last year to ten this year.
Yeah, they cut down their expenses.
They broke it down, though, because they didn't have medical supplies, fuel, all that broke down. They broke this down in, in, uh, detail.
And she thinks, and she thinks there's gonna be less. Yeah, and she thinks there'll be, it'll be less because of Freeman opening the needs of clothes.
You start with.
Which makes sense. They won't have.
Less transport.
Utilities.
Hospital to take him to, they won't have to take him to Pittsburgh or Nevada or wherever when they pick him up. So it will make a difference.
Um, just for P's and Q's, Susan's budget was ten thousand dollars over what they asked.
Because I mean, she's, and that's the ten thousand dollars is because of that.
For that striker.
Yes, that striker, because Susan added that herself, and we've, we felt like that this Terry girl was very responsible on her budget.
So you wanna change that to, uh, one, two, five, nine, two, two, three?
We just need to add the ten thousand to whatever we had.
Okay.
To take care of that new contract.
Yeah. Okay.
And I think Susan has.
We all agree on twelve, one million two hundred fifty nine thousand two hundred twenty three dollars.
That's what I, yeah, I'm good.
I think we need to figure out something with overtime. I think we need to.
There's no, there's no, no, there's no overtime. They're on twenty four hours.
They're, they're.
They get billed in.
There is overtime, I, I see it come across the approval.
Twenty four hour shift, so if they're working a double shift, they're gonna, forty eight hours, so they're gonna have forty, and they're gonna have eight, that's the law, that's federal wage law. So there's no such thing as no overtime for an EMS person.
Well, I mean, there's a bunch.
Wait, wait, wait. Explain that again, please.
Okay, they're on a twenty four hour shift rotation. When they go to work, they're there for twenty four hours.
Okay.
Okay, you have two twenty four hour shifts, what does that make?
Forty eight.
Forty eight hours, so that's forty hours of regular pay and eight hours of overtime. Period. Doesn't apply to everybody, but.
So do, do they work twenty four on, twenty four off, or they go?
I'm as, I'm assuming, I don't know, but I'm assuming maybe they go twenty four on and maybe they're off two days and then back on twenty four on. I don't know.
Because I'm trying really hard not to talk about individuals' pay, because I was like, wow, I mean, that was.
Yeah, because.
I mean, they, 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 they have a, I mean, it is a, uh, tough schedule.
It is, it is.
It is.
It's a tough schedule to, to try to maintain.
They explain that to you, and she'd be glad to come and talk to you and tell you why it's like that and how it has to be like that. And that's why you're always gonna have overtime on EMS. Now, with Sheriff's Department, the reason you have overtime is because the fact. There's two, the way I understand it, there's two personnel on each shift. Okay, then one of those personnel has to go to court and testify, so somebody else has to come in and be on that same shift. Because you've got the county, northern county, southern county, et cetera.
Right.
And so when that happens.
Then you're paying two people to do the same job.
Right, because some, or somebody has to transport him. So you got two guys that's transporting a prisoner somewhere. Okay, so, and that's their, takes them off their shift, so you gotta have two people come in or work extra to take care of it. And that's why you have overtime in, in, uh, uh, public ser, safety.
We're good, Commissioner Milburn?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I, I don't think that we need to stop trying to figure out a solution.
Yeah, I mean, I think going into twenty twenty six, there's a lot of things that.
Well, and I think you need to talk to Terry.
Starting in January and not waiting until.
Right, well, and Terry does a really good job of explaining why these are twenty four hour shifts. I mean, Daisy, she, Joe, she did to our committee, there's nothing, I mean, that's the way it's gonna be.
Yeah.
You know, and so they're always.
Well, I, I know that, uh, Greg told me no, but EMS was ran by Mercy, and we allotted, what, three hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, something like that.
I have no idea.
And if Freeman were willing to do something like that, and we did the same for them, we would.
But Freeman's already said they don't want it.
Well, maybe they'll change their mind.
I don't know, I, I'm just saying you wanna be sure you've got a credible EMS service. You owe that to your taxpayers if nothing else. Nine one one and EMS are two very important, public safety.
So special alcohol and drugs, there's nothing?
No, that's by the way now.
And for bridge and covert?
Special.
That was rolled under Roden Bridge.
Yeah.
It rolled over last year, yeah.
And same thing with Special Bridge?
Yes.
Yep.
So now we gotta go to landfill?
Landfill, which is, uh, so, uh, user funded anyway, fee funded. Pretty much, there's no tax.
Okay.
You can hand that to them. At least one's done.
Same thing with Roden Bridge, sales tax, Special Parks Recreation, Sewer District.
Did you wanna look at anything on landfill, like, uh, fees or anything like that?
Well, on that one, wages went up also.
Huh?
On that one, wages went up also.
Josh Jones.
Thousand.
Josh Jones had that on our committee, and he's, and of course, he used to be in the business where he would have used them. And he suggested, if you wanna raise your fees, talk to who you're, who are.
Well, we're, we're gonna get fees raised on us.
That's, that's what he said, and he said, find out what it is around here, talk to your people that are definitely. He said, there's nothing wrong with that, it's just, you don't just, you know.
Right.
But my side.
We need to, we need to be talking with Allen County landfill, we need to be talking with, uh. Because they're, 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 they're closing now during windy, windy days. Uh, and so we have to determine where we're gonna take trash on those days.
Looks like they're starting to try to build the cash reserve in that one also.
That's why landfill.
So, so we could take that, um.
Well, you can only hold it for so many hours or so many days.
From the wage and put it in the cash reserve as well.
Don't you know, that's the one that you gotta be really careful on, you gotta have that inspection on this year, you've gotta have, form that committee. You gotta, so I mean, I hesitate to do anything different with that, just because of.
Well, the thing is, we're taking wages out of, like, increases, where we're giving wages, wages out, out of everything else, so I don't know why you would leave it in one and.
And I don't know that, that it has raises in there, they have another person, I don't know. See, that's where we, when you, you're at a disadvantage, because you don't know what was there last year. Or the year before.
Well, they, they, they increase, or they put in their cash reserve this year, that's why it went up.
That's good.
Uh, they got a bond interest, that went up.
Good.
Uh, the principal went down, um.
That's one of those, what's the payoff on that thing on that?
Less than they were, uh.
Look on that page.
On available resources from last year.
Thirty five thousand eight hundred and seventy five.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I'm not sure why wages went up, because they're. Actually down employees there.
Yeah, it's.
I think they're trying to.
It's thirty five thousand eight seventy five.
Huh?
I think they're trying to plus them up.
Like, get more money for the landfill?
No, I think they're trying to plus up employees at the, at the landfill.
Well, they're just trying to catch up from twenty four, twenty four.
March first, it's coming March first, is the last payment.
But it went down in twenty five, and then you're trying to catch up.
On the landfill, so you're probably gonna be talking about doing something, I mean, I don't know what you're, what.
Twenty four to twenty five.
But that's what I was looking, it's, there's a thirty five thousand dollar principal payment.
Thirteen hundred.
It's due March first, eight hundred and seventy five dollars in interest, and that is the last payment.
On that building?
On that building. The only thing you have left in you.
I'd say if we keep, if we're, if we're good in the middle at, at the level that this is. That this was, you know, where you guys were at on the five, nine.
Yeah.
One, two, four, if this gets anywhere close to that, I wouldn't be messing with those wages. They need to be, uh, even if they did get an increase, they need to have it.
I would agree.
Because they haven't had increases for, a lot of them, for years.
There's some of them that are making the same amount they made.
Yeah. Yeah.
What'd you say?
Well, I think they're down, yeah, now back up to three, aren't they? Didn't you guys put a third guy in there?
Yeah, there's three, but they're, they're talking about plusing up to four.
Yeah, they should be. Yeah.
Because in, because Commissioner Milburn, in reality. That three, that third is on the road, so there's really only two. And if you got two, one person's up on the hill with C and D, that leaves one.
That's true. Run the hut and push the stuff into the trailer.
Right, and then on top of that, you still have.
And you get a run of trash.
Being far, so.
That's not, yeah. Yeah. They need four. Yeah, yeah.
Well, the trash pusher always ran the scale.
Well, when it was Diane, it was superhuman on her part to do it. I can guarantee you, she'll tell you that. That's why she's not there now.
There's, there's no way you should have your trash pusher running the scale.
Well, and one of the things.
Well, your skilled person would be awful bored if that's all they did.
Huh?
Your skilled person would be awful bored if that's all they did.
Well, I mean, I don't know, you gotta count, count vehicles out there sometime.
What happens, I, I hear what you're saying, I, I see the paradigm, but here's what I'm telling you. It's kinda like. If you're going, if, if you're looking at everything in totality, they have these mad dashes, and then everything slows down. And when it slows down, they play catch up, and then they have this mad dash again. That's just how it goes. I've been out there on days where it's just. That barn is just completely full and the driver's out, makes sense? Can't do anything when, when the truck is out. So.
We gotta, well, because we got trailers that we need to replace.
I guess what I'm saying, Commissioner Milburn, sometimes we just have to trust our rank and file people, you know.
Seeing, I don't see capital outlay, it's at zero, so, and commodities, commodities didn't go up, um. Huh?
Didn't ask for.
Right, I mean, but if you wanna replace trailers, you need to be, yeah. I wonder what their, what their, um, um, it says seven hundred thousand on user fees. But they're not being, I mean, there's nothing levied out of taxes on this.
Uh, that's because it's, it is supposed to be supported by user fees.
Yeah.
That's what your five year plan says.
Yeah, so. That's what I'm just saying, I'm saying it's, so even if there is an increase in wages, it's, it's not something we're gonna worry about on. On the tax side, it's not gonna affect the.
Commissioner, are you good with seven ninety two, nine fifty?
Well, since it looks like it's coming in in the fees, uh, well, seven hundred thousand of it is, um, ninety two is.
Carryover.
Carryover, but, um, I'd rather put that extra where they have on that line item down to the cash reserve we're trying to build.
Okay, but that's not gonna show up in your tax thing.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay, that'll show up at the end of the year, next year, you know, I'm saying the end of the year or whatever.
Yeah.
But you're, you can't bill tax levy with a mill levy.
I'm good with it.
You can't build ca, cash reserve with a tax levy.
Roden Bridge sales tax.
My turn.
You good? I don't. Think we just leave that way.
Susan's number is spot on on that one.
Yeah.
And then Special Parks and Recreation, I think that's just, I don't know what the eight seventy five is for.
Is that the one that comes to?
It's just a reoccurring every.
Yeah, that's, that's the liquor tax.
Oh, is that what, okay, okay. That should be going up.
No, people are healthy right now, they don't drink as much.
The doctor asks you, do you drink, and you say, occasionally.
Occasionally, but bottle down. Alright, where we at now?
Ask me if I drink, you know, I say Jack. No, I don't. Yeah, Sewer District, that's.
That's that when you, the one they did that addition out there.
I don't think you can do it.
No, I think it's it's pretty much, it's not taxed either. It's kinda fee driven. So jail county building sales tax. County building sells tax.
Look, if you want, if you wanna, if you wanna gerrymander the the description of what I can spend sales tax on, I have.
Spell that.
I have a building out there that I would love to spend some of that money.
Spell that.
What, gerrymandered? Yeah, I have to spell on paper. Starts with a G. G E R Y M A N D.
M A N D.
E R R Y.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but if you're gonna sit there and gerrymander that, then hey, there's there's a compound.
I think, I think, yeah, I think the sheriff would wanna beat me up, so.
Yeah, I think he would do.
Well, I promise to bring you snacks if you're in the jailhouse over there.
Yeah.
Opioid fund.
I didn't think we'd leave that alone. It is what it is.
I think you're about to be to the end. I say you're about to be to the end.
Right. The opioid fund, it gets replenished every so often. We did give some money to a charity. Huh? Yeah, yeah, so. But it can only be used for certain reasons, so. And I think what we used it for this last time was very good reason, so, very good, so.
Did you capture all the information that you need to give to uh Mr. Motley?
I believe so.
All right, we got through this.
I can just pass it to you to look at. I didn't go through, I was, whatever those last pages you went through, if there's nothing on them, I believe you.
They're all non-tax. Non-budgeted funds. So here's those funds that we were talking about where we didn't know where they were listed at. Where it says non-budgeted funds, A.
Yep.
Page twenty-seven.
Yep.
Where, what was it? It was some special tech fund or something.
Yeah, there's a a special tech fund in the treasurer's office.
Clerk and deeds. And thank you so much, Amber. And then there is a uh, there's a fund from the NRP.
That's the last page, ain't it?
Yeah, and your motor vehicle taxes are gonna be there too, David.
Huh?
On these non-budgeted funds, you're gonna, it's gonna show your motor vehicle taxes there too.
And that motor vehicle is how the treasurer asks for so little money to run office, cause she utilizes that fund.
Yes. I'm just saying, I'm I'm, that's where their funds are at, cause I was always trying. When they mention them, I'm like, well, where is that? If it's non-budgeted, where where is that? Where can we get that money?
Those tech funds are used to replace equipment that goes out on the.
Yeah.
I mean, they get a lot more than what they need for equipment, so.
Yeah, okay. I'm good.
But those are important to look at, though.
Yes, yeah.
And it's sort of like those two pages that I showed you where your debt was. Some of them are the bonds and some of them are the contracts. But it's always important to look at that and see, next year, okay, how many of those are are getting paid off in twenty twenty-six? So if someone comes in and asks you for something, you'll know.
Yeah.
We're gonna have less or no, you know, or we're gonna have more money and we can reduce the mill levy because we no longer have that. Bond paid or whatever. And so it's always important to look at those.
To see what's getting ready to fall off.
The non-budgeted as well as the.
It's one of the papers.
Page what?
And what I really like is that the sheriff has started uh. Bringing in the Alda County that is off, that that serves to offset.
That's what Luke said when when we had the budget hearing was I asked Luke and he said, he said, we're not to capacity yet, but we're getting closer. Well, then he got that competition from whatever the other sheriff is, it's letting them come for fifteen days, dollars a day cheaper or whatever they were charging. But they're still doing doing good.
Yeah.
I mean, they're still doing good. Much better than originally.
So on page nineteen, you did mark seventy-nine, seven seven hundred and ninety-two thousand nine hundred and fifty. So I'm gonna put a check beside that one, okay? And that would be it, Commissioner Milburn. Your copy's congruent with mine.
Okay, I'll make a copy of it.
Okay.
Now, everything's in here that you want changed, is this correct?
I believe so.
Okay. You better go run a picture of that. We don't wanna lose it. I wanna make sure we get a couple copies of this, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Catch.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Now, one of the things that you could do if you wanted to on your budget hearing, so you know, because of this publication, I think the Tribune will let you go till the next morning. But until you call and find that out, you could have, you could have, we'll have this hearing within twenty-four hours. So you could have a meeting at the end of next week, like on Friday.
Okay.
Or Thursday, you don't want it to be two, three, four, the fifth.
We uh, it's been advertised in a lot of places that it'll be published on this coming Wednesday, so. If we could get somebody to plug it in and get it back to us, that would be wonderful if we could do that and.
We could just do a real quick special meeting.
Well, we could.
And vote on it.
Yeah.
Who else? Okay, so. Amber, do you have access to that program?
Uh-uh, I didn't do anything.
Does Selena?
Um, I'm not sure. I don't know that she's ever really done much with like a tutor.
Yeah, because my thing right now is like, there's no redundancy. If if Madam Clerk, if God forbid anything happens to Madam Clerk, we're lost. Makes sense? So I'm just kinda like, that's my point. I'm just, we need to be able to get access to the doc, to at least the program to do the work. Makes sense?
Yeah.
Granted, we don't need it all year long, but the one time we need it, it just so happens to be for two.
And you may not need that program to do what we need to do because once Greg does this and we take a look at this, it's gonna have a mill levy on it. And the only thing that has to be published is that one page.
Okay. We just need to reach that mill with that page, yeah.
As you're ta- I hate to do that, cause I never like to do something that doesn't have that one-page balances.
What's the grand total of all those?
Okay.
You don't wanna say.
What's the grand total of, I mean.
So once he gets this done, we'll let you know.
Okay.
It's three point two million, three three million two hundred and forty-two.
No, I mean for the whole thing. If you wanted to fill out page thirty-one right now.
Oh, I don't know. We have, we have to sit down and add it all up, buddy.
Right.
That's my point.
We got an adding machine.
Well, knock yourself out. I'm trying to do this.
I'm signing your.
Okay, you're not signing my check. That's already been signed.
Please don't forget to take that one out for Bob's. His is gonna pick up.
That cover is available for the state.
Is it?
It's not a simple spreadsheet.
Okay, it's not user-friendly?
He just said a paralegal.
Seven eight.
Okay.
Well, I'll ask, I'll ask Bob for it.
And yes, both Greg and I have conversed, but most of our copies have been messed up by Pluggity numbers.
Can I leave the table? It's a meeting, not a work session. Can I put this back? I'll just stay here.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead. You can take uh.
We need to do is take one of these forms that's not been written on and go through and just highlight the stuff that's gotta be changed.
There's one right here.
It better be.
Is this?
You wanna copy, wanna read, hey, Carolyn, you wanna read my copy? Cause my copy has all the highlights. The only thing on page, on one of the pages, I don't have all the writing that she did. I'm doing it here.
There's one on, one more printing.
Yeah, I know what I'm gonna do, but I'm gonna take, I wanna take this home.
You want blue?
No, I wanna take this home and I'm gonna finish what, and I'm gonna, I've got this in my computer at home. So I'm gonna take this home and then give it to Greg and uh see if I just change these. Then this other's gotta be changed later by Susan and, I mean, we can't get access to this all bad. But uh if what, if what uh Micah's got on here is correct, and I believe Micah. And we get her figures on here and we'll see what it does. That'll be, that'll be pretty easy to do, just taking.
Whatever the grand total is divided by.
And that way.
One thirty-eight, six forty-four, three two nine.
Well, and uh and Greg can put the, on his spreadsheet that he's already got in his system.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then we'll send you guys.
Did my copy come back? No, there's one that says Sam. What?
No, I'm, this is, this is.
No, there's one that says Sam's on there.
I am concerned that, um, you know, we took a lot back to their previous year budget um in the general fund. And then we took, you know, by taking that one point four off, but we, we, I don't believe we continue to do that throughout consistently, so. Might ask Greg about that.
What do you mean, taken out consistently?
Well, that one point four that Greg said.
See, I don't think we ever put that in anywhere. What we did is we looked, we looked to see. What the increase in valuation was. It was one point four percent.
Okay.
Okay, and so then we talked about the fact that no one would get more than one point four percent. But then when we started going through it and looking at it, people said, well, they really don't need any more. We're gonna cut their budget. You know what I'm saying? So what I'm saying, we, okay, and then the only person that we made the exception for was the public safety.
Yeah.
And uh and of course, that's established by law. You have to fund him.
Yes.
And at his level. And uh and we did, we took out, what, two hundred thousand dollars out of his request, but but still funded.
And we did take road and bridge back down close to besides their commodities.
Right, right.
Till last year, so, okay.
Okay. I came to stay thirty minutes and I've been here four hours.
Thanks, Carolyn, for staying to help. And Joe, thank you for staying to help.
I will say this.
We sure appreciate you guys sticking around.
You guys should like open up a class at Fort Scott Community College teaching budget.
Government accounting.
Uh, any economics class. It's a class five eighteen, regular.
But thank you, Joe. Appreciate it.
When did you say, nine eighteen?
Five, five or eighteen.
My step, I'm sorry.
It's all right. Yeah, it's uh five eighteen or five nineteen.
May, next year?
Sorry. No, it's September.
Nine.
Uh, I motioned to accept the budget document as amended.
The budget document that that we gave Carolyn? I second that.
What's the uh?
Yes, but she's.
I don't know, but we can accept it for a day to give it to Greg.
There to get it to the.
Then we can have a special meeting again, or we don't.
It will still exceed regular.
Yeah, they don't have anything yet then, right?
You don't have a choice.
The Tribune?
No.
Right.
Right, okay.
It's just how.
And then the other question I have is in the minutes.
She's trying to take a vote to turn that into Greg. I, that's when I get clarification. I'm gonna get.
One copy.
Okay, I was gonna say, he need, cause if if they've already made, well, they can.
I'm good with the document as it stands today, but if it's not, if it doesn't come out the way we want it to come out.
Special meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Okay. And, cause to me, it's like, if if Greg can do this this weekend and send it to us.
Yeah.
And.
We still have to have a special meeting.
Right, we'll still have to have a special meeting to get together to discuss if we don't, you know what I'm saying?
If it don't look right, yeah.
So I say yes. Mister Chairman?
Yes.
I'm gonna call him. I'm gonna call him as soon as I get home and see what he wants to do.
All right, can I get some clarification? So um what you had originally planned was to publish by September third for a hearing on September fifteenth. The latest date we can do it is the twentieth and you seemed okay with that. The twentieth is a Saturday.
Yeah.
Are you wanting to hold your hearing on the twentieth and publish by the tenth? I just wanna make sure everything's clear because Susan had asked me to send her the numbers that you came up with tonight. So she could work those this weekend to get to the Tribune on Monday for publication on Wednesday for a September fifteenth hearing.
Well, we won't know that number until next week. Correct.
So we could publish Saturday the sixth. Could it, if we're publishing the third.
Mm-hmm.
And we're hearing on the fifteenth, couldn't we publish the sixth?
Are we going?
And here on the eighteenth.
Has to be ten days.
Ten, ten, okay, so ten, is it, if it's, if it's published.
They, they put out a paper on Saturday.
On Saturday, that's a day late.
Oh, it is?
If, if, if they publish, if it's ten days, so one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. The tenth day would be the nineteenth, if they publish on a Wednesday.
You can publish on Saturday and make it happen.
So the thing is, we can still publish on the tenth and have the meeting on Friday, the nineteenth. Or am I wrong?
So you can publish on the tenth.
Does it have to be ten days or can it be less than ten?
No, it has.
Less than ten days.
It has to, it has to be ten days.
Mm-hmm.
Publication date to hearing date has to be ten days.
So when, when Mike, so when they, you don't count that first day?
No, you count the day, the first time it appears in the papers, day one.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
And this is our hearing date.
That's ten days.
So if that was our published date, why isn't that being our hearing date?
The whole tenth day.
Who says that?
I don't know what.
When, 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 when do they publish? In the morning or in the afternoon?
Well, these are them.
Overnight. It comes out six o'clock in the morning.
Six o'clock in the morning, so they get in the whole day.
They have to publish in the paper on the fifth for that ten days to be accurate.
Deliver till three o'clock in the afternoon.
Well, it depends on what, but that, you don't have to worry about that. You can get it at grocery stores at six o'clock in the morning when they're open. They're already, they're already in the dispersing cabinets and at the stores, yeah. So I go get mine. My one one, yeah.
Yeah, you would have to publish by that, by the sixth.
That's what I'm talking.
But I, I don't, I wasn't sure why you guys.
They're just trying to buy more time to meet again.
Yes.
Because, so wishy-washy right now.
Right, and I don't know. They're gonna do that in the middle of vacation.
Mm-hmm.
So, so they can go, they can go, we could move this up. They just need to have, they, they need here. I mean, right now you're fine on publishing here.
Right, and this doesn't have to be your final number. I mean, you can still go back.
Still change it before October one.
You can reduce your budget at the time of final adoption. You can't increase it.
Right.
But you can go ahead with what you had tonight, this very one here.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
That'd be fine.
See, and then you've got, clear up until your budget hearing date to decide for sure what you, what to do. And it, yeah, so.
I guess my thing is, so when does she wanna do, when, when does she wanna.
I mean, she was willing to do this on vacation. If we sent this dirt remotely, she was willing to come in and remotely change these figures for you. But I don't think she needs to, as long as you don't think it's gonna be any more than.
Hey, never mind. Hand me a, uh, one of your sticker thingies.
Does that make sense?
Just one. I'll give you a quarter.
What's the magic word?
Please. Now I'm keeping them.
Because you've cut money out tonight.
Yeah.
So we know.
We added some, but we cut some too.
Okay, but but you cut out more than you added.
Well, let me double check.
Well, double check, Micah, cause.
Okay, I think I marked that.
They, so what you're telling me, you cut that one, then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then you added, and if that's the case, you know that you could leave what you were already gonna publish, you leave it to publish.
But I signed the big stack.
Reduce it from there and still be able to get it done earlier.
Thank you.
Okay.
Here you go, sir.
Thank you.
Cause today is what, Thursday?
Yesterday's Friday.
Yeah. So you definitely.
Today's Friday.
Friday, today's Friday. So you, they still, they haven't have way to, next Wednesday would be the third, but then you have the.
Tuesday, yeah, we would.
That budget hearing on the, on, if we publish it on the third.
Do you want me to read it to you, Micah?
Budget hearing on the thirteenth.
I, I already have these added up.
Yeah, because that came out, that what you're adding is three million whatever, right? Do you want me to read that number?
Yeah, three, two, four, yeah.
Three, three, two, four, two, zero, one, one, zero. And then the first one you're, you're gonna add is.
The appraisers?
Two, two hundred and fifty-one. Two, five, one, zero, zero.
I'll do it page by page and put, put them on there if that's okay. Cause I got a different total for this page. This one added it too. No, we're going up. Cause we had to add to the sheriff's budget also.
You should have had to add anything to sheriff's budget.
Somebody said Susan sent out a new budget that had him a larger fund there and so. Was that right?
It was, but we didn't agree to that. We agreed to what he put on paper.
Oh, okay. Well, then maybe just take that.
What was it, forty, you remember?
You had said two, two million, three, twenty-six, zero, twenty-two. Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's what the number you wanna stay with on that? Yeah, because, yeah, so that does add then, okay.
Well, what is the difference, though?
Like thirty, twenty-six thousand?
Susan ran a report on the wages and the correction wages weren't.
He didn't add anything. She add, she changed it because she checked the wages. And see, that's what I think on some of those other ones. The reason there was a difference in the wages is she personally. The reason there was a difference in the wages is she personally checked those, which was very smart of her, as she did everyone's budgets. Because if they received a wage or hired an extra raise or something during the year, it wouldn't have been in that stuff we had. So one of the kids ended up with two million, what was it?
Probably some numbers that she's been wanting from them.
Three hundred and twenty-six thousand.
It's budget stuff.
Three twenty-six, so she had a twenty-six. She had a twenty-six thousand to his left, okay. Okay, 'cause I couldn't figure out what it was. So that's just, she just added twenty-six thousand to his, Micah.
So it's thirteen million, thirteen million, eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and one.
That's the total?
That I got.
Thirteen?
Thirteen, eight, seven, one, two, zero, one. And you divide it by what, one hundred and thirty-eight?
One, three, eight, six, four, four, three, two, nine.
By what, thirteen?
Thirteen, eight, seven, one.
Zero, zero, thirteen, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Hundred and thirty-eight, why?
Hundred and thirty-eight million, six hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine. That's the total valuation for the, for, for all of...
What was the expenses, that's what I'm...
Just number, no, wait.
That was the expenses, not the...
It's this one here, right?
Taxes.
One thirty-eight, six, four, four...
You said a hundred and thirty-eight million?
The total valuations, the total assessed valuation is one, three, eight, six, four, four, three, two, nine. But the total, that's not how you get your, your middle...
No, no, no.
You divide that by your, 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 your tax, not your, your expenditures.
You take your total expenditures and divide that by your valuation.
Right.
So that comes to one point, zero, one.
No.
No.
Did I do something wrong?
It should be like point, it'd be, it should be like somewhere like point oh five, seven, something, or point oh five, nine, something. That's what it should be.
Oh my gosh, this calculator's backwards from that calculator, 'cause that would be...
Make sure you only add up, in your deal, that you only add up taxes, not, not...
Oh my gosh.
Is that point, or is that comma, that's a comma, three, two, six.
Make sure you didn't put any...
Point one, zero, 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 four, eight, eight.
Times a thousand.
Times a thousand?
But it's not gonna be right.
That's not right, that's a hundred, hundred point.
What, what do you, what do you show for total, uh...
Did you add up some non-tax stuff in there?
The only thing I added...
Did you add landfill in there?
I did.
Yeah.
Is that where I messed up?
Yeah, well, I mean, there's probably about four or five that are non...
'Cause I, I added up...
I imagine what Micah comes up with, 'cause it can be a whole lot different.
I didn't do that.
I think it's around seventy-five thousand for what the budget committee gets.
And that probably is because of the...
I added, I added landfills, I go back to landfill.
Added Jennifer's position in, and then the finance.
Yeah. Seventy-five thousand. You wanna figure out what your, your taxes on each individual deal? It's still all revenue.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I mean, they're...
Well, thank goodness.
It's gonna be about that six.
Okay, give me the figure you come up with.
Okay, one more to...
I'm done here, dear, I'm taking what she's...
Okay, so the new number is thirteen million, seventy-eight, two, five, one.
I'm sorry, I can't be right, 'cause the old million, the old figure is sixteen million, nine sixty-one, sixty-four.
What was it?
Sixteen million, nine sixty-one, sixty-four. One, six, nine, six, one, nine, six, four. That is your budget authority for expenditures.
Okay, yeah, I see that.
Yep. So...
And I'm just, and however much you increase that, we need to add this figure to it. I'm just gonna give her exact figure here, she's, she added again, I think, aren't you?
Mm-hmm, I wanna get the same number twice.
I hope so.
I didn't have that sheriff's month, add the sheriff's extra money, so it's one oh two, two eight oh.
One oh two, and that's an increase.
Yeah, 'cause we had to add the sheriffs as well.
One oh two, two eight oh, right?
Mm-hmm, yep.
To the sixteen?
Just to the budget committees.
That would make it one, seven, zero, six, four, two, four, four.
And I've heard that number before.
Okay.
Say that again, Carolyn.
One, seven, zero, six, four, two, four, four. Okay, now, let's take this. Oh, there's assessed valuation, okay.
Oh, messed up.
Take this, divided by that. Okay.
Yeah, you gotta figure out what your, what your tax is gonna be on that expenditure.
Assess valuation into that figure like that.
To get that, yeah.
And see if you come up with this fifty-nine point one, two, four.
Yeah, that's why that program is so... Well, yeah, and I mean, you, you can, you can take like on the general fund and take that, and then subtract your available resources, and that, what's left over is gonna be your taxes. And then that, you can determine your tax rate off of that.
Should be this divided into this.
And then you add up all your tax rates, and you're gonna get your bill.
Right.
And that's what you have to put on page one.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's how much money we're gonna have.
It's on each one, and then you gotta know what your, your available resource money is, and if it's accurate on what we have in here. Which I'm assuming that it is, since we didn't change it.
Okay, how was that, what was that?
Right, right, and then you calculate each one, I mean, that's what I was, I did earlier, because I was messing around, trying to get it below, or get it down below five, five, nine. And I was messing with commodities, is what I was messing with. Because, I mean, you know, when you talk to people and you have your revenue neutral rate, and, and, uh, hearing and stuff, and you listen to those people talk, and everybody's tightening their belt, so that's what I was looking at. Let's see how we, how much we can tighten our belt. But without knowing, not knowing what each commodity breakdown is, you can't, you know, that's where we gotta start paying attention to, uh, accounts payable, and, and like, like Carolyn was saying, having that one center person kinda being the traffic controller.
That's right.
Yeah.
So what's the formula for figuring out the mill? You take expenditure?
You gotta know what your tax is.
So that's the missing link? Got it, all right.
So like here on general fund, if you took that, and then subtract your available resources, you're gonna get what your tax, tax is, and then you divide that by your assessed value, and you get your tax rate, you write that down, and add them up, and you'll get your, your mill. So we have to calculate on each one of them? And that's why I have a blank base right there. What was the, uh...
And that's why she was saying that, it's right there on our minutes. Publication date is September the third.
Yeah.
For budget hearing on the ninth fifteen.
Yeah.
Take this figure, subtract this figure from this figure. Okay, write that figure down. That's how much we're getting from it, other than tax money.
Oh.
'Cause see, this is telling us how much we need, and that's telling us how much we're getting. So whatever the difference, is subtract that from that seventeen million. Then we're gonna have our number.
I was wondering why our general went up so much, because I know we saved money in the general. It's because we were absorbing so much more money on nine one one.
I have seventeen oh sixty-four, two forty-four.
So we have eight million, two ninety-nine. Okay.
That's how my, and then, okay, the next one is that into this is gonna tell us what that mill is. So we're gonna, so that means we gotta raise that an extra hundred thousand dollars.
Wouldn't it do what?
In the, in the tax. Point oh five, nine, eight.
Nine, eight.
Nine, eight.
Six, it's point oh five, nine, eight, six, but it's, it's showing that we need, that whatever you've done tonight, we need to raise almost another hundred thousand dollars, which makes sense, but...
Less than a mill, then, yeah.
Oh, yeah, 'cause a mill is what?
Is that included, the hundred thousand that we were talking about, taking out the, uh, that didn't include it?
No, no, so we wouldn't have to if we used that sales tax, but that's right.
What did we say, was a hundred and thirty-eight cents? I've got so many figures written down here, but was it like a hundred and thirty-eight, seven, something, okay, what?
Divide that by a thousand.
Yeah, mhm, and so you're still below last year's mill levy, but if you want to go down to the one, five, nine, whatever it is...
What is it now?
Five, nine, eight.
Six, one.
Five, nine point eight. I mean, and that's rough here, 'cause we, we got scratch paper and everything else that we're using, okay?
Yeah.
And that's based on what Miley gave us, that she added up, and we assume, and there's no reason for us to believe you didn't do it right, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
But we can bring that down, because we're still...
That's a lot of guessing.
Okay.
But, but Sam, the purpose of you taking that from the sales tax and giving it to the sheriff is so you can move more to the general fund, so you wouldn't actually levy less.
Right.
Yeah.
The general fund to me is what we needed.
Yeah, so you can go out for bonds and things. From what Greg said, I have no experience there, actually.
I just, I really think that you're, I think that sale, the sales tax this year is gonna be better, I just, I cannot believe that it won't be better than last year. I mean, it's been growing. What the state's collecting has been growing, I mean, on the sales...
What's the number for that?
But it's, it's not gonna solve it all in one year.
Right.
Oh, no.
You know when that number comes in?
When our sales tax comes in? Around the twenty-fifth of every month.
Uh-huh. And you did it really well, I mean, I was looking at that, well, and that's, uh, one of the things that Susan was asking you about doing was giving you guys an update on the financial condition as of the end of the last quarter.
Yeah.
And you could do it now, like at the end of, you could wait a month, not till the end of September, which would be three quarters, or you could go back to the June thirtieth, but I mean, that would give you an idea of how it's coming in this year.
Yeah.
So what do you want, we're, we're gonna send these, we're gonna give these figures to Greg.
Yeah.
We're gonna send these figures to Susan, she's gonna change, you want her to go ahead and change everything on what you did here? You think, you don't think you're gonna change it again?
I don't think so, I mean, it, biggest thing is we go flat, we build up our cash reserves, and we try to keep the mill levy.
Yeah, it's still above the revenue neutral rate, but it's less than...
Less than the max that you proposed.
Right.
Last year was fifty-nine point nine, oh, and that came up to fifty-nine point eight, seven, I think.
And it's still not as much as you were proposing.
Oh, well, that first one was sixty-five.
Way lower, we're still way lower than that.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
'Cause again, it goes, it goes back, and I'm gonna keep caveat, I'm gonna keep saying this until we get to that point where we execute, it's like, this is a one-time deal, come January, we gotta get together, the five of us.
Well, thank you.
That's right.
Carolyn and Joe, we still, we still use ninety-nine percent of your budget, and it was the building blocks for what we got done here, and we couldn't have done it without your committee, obviously.
It's just that...
It's quite clear that we couldn't have done it without you.
Your ten, your fifteen.
We sure appreciate you guys coming in, helping us get through this.
And then, hey, next year again, okay?
We're not...
I'm not committing to nothing, I'm not, if Micah calls, I'm not answering the phone.
You will.
Well, thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You guys ready to call in?
You're gonna send that stuff to Susan.
No, I think we got more work to do.
All right.
What, you can do this, but I can't, Micah?
I'm gonna get this stuff to Greg.
Well, I don't feel good.
Okay.
I'm hungry.
Can I get one, one more clarification before you? So we're sending this to Susan, she's gonna update the numbers to publish in Wednesday, the third's paper for the budget hearing on the fifteenth, is that correct? Okay, I just wanna make sure we're a hundred percent clear.
We still got a little bit of time before something didn't work out right, okay?
We do, publish when.
And as soon as Greg gets this, I'll have him distribute to you guys.
Thank you, Carolyn.
All right, man, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so we had a move in a second?
No, nobody moved a second.
No, nobody moved a second.
Thank you. I did.
Oh, you moved?
I was saying, other, other, we're still talking, 'cause you technically made that...
The one time she moved, she's using her indoor voice.
Yeah, I did.
She, she, she's hoarse.
I motioned we adjourn the meeting.
Second, second, he did it.
So Sam, beat you there, uh, Beer Bear?
Yes.
Tran?
Yes.
Milburn?